Paged on the north wall of the legislative chambers.
But that's not defibrillator.
And an automatic external defibrillator is available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in God, in the principles with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Health Center Board of Trustees, and I'll turn that over to Commissioner Duda.
If I can get my... Could we begin with the roll call, please? Burl.
Sheriff, you.
President.
Trustee Borgeson.
Here.
Trustee Morgan.
Here.
Trustee Kraft.
Here.
Trustee Boyle.
Thank you. We have one item on the trustee agenda this morning. This is an item that we discussed yesterday at length out at the trustee meeting at the health center. Update slash action on approved HMA recommendations for long-term care. This has to do with bids to outsource the laundry. Jennifer, I think we would look to you for a little guidance here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I just want to pass this out. That is the same thing that I emailed to you the other day, but just so you have it in front of you. Okay. All right. So today I stand before you with a very important task. I have the task of giving you the information that I've learned over the last several months as far as the potential for outsourcing the laundries at the Douglas County Health Center and the laundry for the Douglas County Youth Center. I will try to get you the information as quickly as I can. I know we're on a time crunch, but hopefully I provide you with everything you need. But please ask questions if you have any. Okay. Just a quick timeline. On February 4th, 2013, the HMA presented recommendations to the county board of commissioners. Of those recommendations, it was recommended that we outsource laundry, potentially outsource laundry, housekeeping, and dietary. On January 21st, 2014, administrative staff met with Yula representatives for possible outsourcing. We met with the CAO of the county, administrative staff from the county, all met with Yula representatives and discussed this potential. From that point on, we have maintained good working relations with the Yula members. On January 28th, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners gave authorization to begin the bidding process. On April 23rd, the laundry services bid for the health center and the youth center were On April 29th, 2014, the pre-bid meeting was held in town hall at the health center. Representatives from Ameritech and representatives from Cornhusker State Industries attended. In addition, folks from the youth center and from the health center laundry department attended that meeting as well. On May 14th, 2014, the bid opening here in the chamber revealed two vendors, one Ameritech and one Cornhusker State, the other Cornhusker State Industries. On June 26th, we met again with the Yula representatives and reviewed those bids. Well, and then today, we are presenting, yesterday I presented this before the board of trustees. Okay. The Douglas County Health Center laundry has been in operations for several decades. There was a very brief amount of time back in the early 90s that we did outsource to the University of Nebraska because of issues with sorting. There were problems. We lost some clothing, resident clothing, things of that nature. They didn't have a really good way of keeping that divided. So we did, after about three to five years, make the decision to bring it back in-house. Currently, in the laundry department, we have one civil service employee. Her title is Lead Laundry Worker, and she's been employed with us since 1994. We have seven Yula employees. They're laundry workers, and their dates of employment range from 1997 to 2010. And we have two vacant positions. One of those vacant positions was from a retirement, and the other vacant position's been open for quite a while, just waiting to hire based on the outcome of today's talk. Departments that we serve, we serve the long-term care, including all resident clothing. We serve the community mental health center, the primary healthcare network clinic, the kitchen, radiology, the morgue, and the Douglas County Youth Center. Providing these services has been somewhat of a challenge over the past few years and more recently the last few months. We've had conversations about the equipment and the machinery that we have at the youth center, I mean, the health center, and so it's been a challenge. But I will commend my staff. They've done an excellent job with what they have to work with. We have washing machines that we've relied on from back in the 1960s. On December 13th, our household washer died. And we also have a 35-pound washer from 1996. That machine's actually operational. However, we do have issues with the spinning cycle. In 1990, we have a 1996 55-pound washer that we found out recently is unreparable. We have a 1989 75-pound washer. This is the one pictured on the right. This is operational, however, it does require frequent service. The 1965 200-pound washer that's pictured there on the left is operational and is in fact a favorite of many at the health center laundry, but it too has frequent service requirements. We have a 200-pound washer that's got issues with the drum. The drum has required welding three times. The last time, unfortunately, because of the break in the weld, it did ruin some resident clothing. We did replace that for her. And finally, our 2001 200-pound washer, it has been out of service for quite some time now. It needs to have a motor replacement. It's going to be about $7,500 to replace that motor, so we've held off on doing that. Just like at home, we're required to use detergent, bleach, and other chemicals in our laundry to keep things sanitized. The picture on the left is the computerized control system that feeds the chemicals into the machines. If we were to outsource the service, we would no longer have that need for chemicals. On the right is a pitcher of salt. We do have a softener system that's specific to the laundry. This salt is purchased through the properties. Obviously, if we don't operate the laundry, we will not have that expense either. Dryers. We have 400-pound dryers. Though they're not quite as old as some of the washers, they do have a very difficult time keeping up with our washers when they're all operational. Dryer number 11, not pictured, we do not have a history on. We're not sure when this dryer was put into service, but we do know that it's getting harder and harder to find replacement parts for that dryer. Dryer number 10, pictured on the right, is from 1996. It is operational, but it runs hot, so we have to keep a close eye on it. Dryer number eight on the left, one of the two on the left, is put into service in 93, and it's operational, but tape has to hold the door closed. Dryer number nine, also pictured on the left, was put into service in 1993. It's operational, but it too tends to run hot, so we keep a close eye on that one as well. We've been very fortunate at the health center to have the engineers. The engineers have spent close to 1,000 hours in our laundry department this last year, maintenance-ing our equipment. To, as far as time goes, that's about $24,000 worth of their time. In addition to the washers and dryers, we have four, excuse me, three thermal patch machines. These date back to the 1960s. One of them is not operational. We would have to replace that one. The other two would not necessarily have to be replaced right away, but if we do outsource, these machines would have to stay in the laundry. We would use these machines to label the resident clothing, so very important so that we can keep track of who's is who's. This folding machine is intended to help us out by folding towels, sheets, and blankets. Unfortunately, it has proven to be not very efficient. Items will get stuck, clogged up in there, and inevitably, we have a service call, so it really hasn't proven to do a very good job. If indeed we remain in-house, this will not be replaced. Scales. Scales are very important in a laundry department. This is the one way that we can keep track of the laundry that's coming and going. The scale that is pictured on the left is the scale we use to weigh our soiled linen. This was put into service in 1991, is still operational, and it would be continued whether we remain in-house or whether we outsource. The scale on the right is what we use to clean our, excuse me, weigh our, clean laundry. It was also from, it was from 93, and we would also keep that. It's also operational. Okay. In the last year, maintenance costs for the laundry equipment. I already mentioned the engineers. About 1,000 hours' worth of their time spent in the laundry department working on our machines, which equals about $24,000. We've also had to hire outside services to come in this last year, August 1st to August 31st, about $5,700, for a total of close to $30,000 in maintenance costs. I'll also throw in here that with our maintenance, with our machines being down, we have had to, in the last few months, send some of our laundry out. We currently have a contract with Ameritech to do our pads. They have been kind enough to assist us with some of our laundering needs since our machines have been down and we can't keep up. I just wanted to let you all know that in the last few months, we have had to do that. It's not all of our laundry. It's just a couple of tubs here and there. So that brings us to where we are with the bidding process. Realizing that we needed new machines and realizing that the HMA made those recommendations to potentially outsource, the administrative staff over at the health center decided that we would look at the laundry department first. So like I said, on May 14th, the bids were opened, and we have two bidders, Ameritech Services and Cornhusker State Industries. As a part of this process, I toured both facilities. I thoroughly read through both bids, compared each, and I'm hoping that today I can summarize this information for you so that you can make a well-informed decision. What are we going to save? This is what I've come up with. If we remain in-house, the annual cost will be about $994,000. If we outsource with Ameritech, we're looking at a potential of about $764,000 with a savings of almost $230,000. If we outsource with Cornhusker State, we are looking at an annual cost of approximately $672,000 with an annual savings, or savings of $321,000. Numbers are important, I understand that. But I want you to keep in mind, as we go through this presentation, that there are other factors that should be weighed in on this decision that don't include dollars, and I'm going to try to explain to you what those are so that you're very clear on them. As I mentioned, everything is based on weight in the laundry business. The Douglas County Health Center laundry department does approximately 983,000 pounds of laundry annually, and that does include the youth center laundry. The laundering costs, as I break these down for you, that total 993,000 and so on for the other two services is broke down like this. Laundering costs. If we remain in-house, the laundering costs, and this includes things like chemicals, detergent, bleach, janitorial supplies, that will be about $60,300. That laundering cost also includes the $15,000 that the youth center pays the health center to do their laundry, okay? If we outsource laundering, the laundering costs, like I had indicated, for Ameritech is almost $429,000. If we go with CSI, it's $365,000. Seamstress. This is important because this is one of those areas to where I really can't give you a true estimate on cost and what it's going to save us in the long run. We do not have a seamstress currently at the health center. We did have a seamstress for quite a long time. When she retired, we did post that position. Unfortunately, we were unable to find someone to come in and provide that service, so we've not had a seamstress for a while. However, when we did have a seamstress, she did a very good job at maintaining and allowing us to use things longer by making, you know, mending a hole or, you know, putting a zipper in so that we could use the item as opposed to disposing of the item. So that saved us money right there. If we outsource with Ameritech, Ameritech will also provide us with a seamstress. However, they will charge us an additional $19.75 an hour to have that seamstress. That figure that I came up with was based on the average number of hours that the seamstress we had back when she was there spent on doing the seamstress work for the youth center and for the health center. We averaged that she would spend about three hours a day, five days a week, on youth center things, and two hours a day, five days a week, on health center things. So that's how I achieved that number, I reached that number. If we go with CSI, CSI has agreed to provide a seamstress also. However, they do not charge extra for that service. Disposable hamper liners. Disposable hamper liners are, this is not a direct laundry cost. This is actually a nursing cost. Nursing departments order these laundry hamper liners, and this is what they use to throw the soiled linen in. If we remain in-house or if we go with CSI, we will continue to purchase those laundry liners, hamper liners, as we do right now. We put that out to bid, and then they're carried over in the warehouse, and then the nursing staff requisitions it from the warehouse. If we go through Ameritech, Ameritech has indicated in their bid that we would need to purchase our hamper liners through them. The difference in cost, we're paying about $37.95 a case. If we go through Ameritech, it's about $44.50 a case. So there's the difference in cost there. Reusable washable pads. We use these bed pads. Before, we had disposable, our washable briefs. We no longer have that. We've implemented the use of tenor products or disposable tenor brief products. This cost has dropped considerably for us, but you're probably wondering, why is it $100,000 on one and only 13,000 or 15,000 on the other? I'll try to, I'll do my best to explain that. The health center is unable to launder the bed pads that we have. We don't have the equipment to do it. We don't have the staff to do it. Because of that, we have a contract with Ameritech to do our pads. They wash our pads, and they lease the pads to us. So that $100,000 is for that process of them cleaning the pads and providing the pads. I anticipate that that dollar amount will drop as we continue to increase the use of the disposable products. If we go with Ameritech, Ameritech, because they are currently providing us that service, they have agreed or they have offered to sell us the pads at a discounted rate. And those pads that we would be purchasing are pads that are already in service, are already being used in the health center. If we go with CSI, we would have to put that out to bid. We would like to purchase our own pads if we decide to outsource, and if we do that, we'll have to put that out to bid. That $15,750 there that I've put there, I came up with that number based on estimates that I received. I did not put this out to bid, obviously, so I anticipate that that number could potentially be much lower than that, okay? Personnel. If we remain in-house, we're going to keep the nine staff that we currently have, $491,000. If we outsource, we're going to decrease that to one civil service employee and three Yula employees, and that'll have our annual personnel cost at close to 200,000. Obviously, if we outsource, there'll be some vacation payouts, and currently, if we were to lay off the four individuals in that department, we're looking at about $5,000 payout. Okay. Operational. Operational costs include those things like telephone, office supplies, medical supplies, PPE supplies, linen, towels, gowns, things of that nature. That's not going to change. We're going to continue to have that cost across the board, whether we outsource or not. Machinery and repair. If we decide to stay in-house, it is going to cost us $225,000, and that is based on the two estimates that I received. I had, I received estimates from RJ Cool and Company and AA Horwath and Company, or and Sons, excuse me, and that was the estimate that I was given. That would get us one new household washer, one 60-pound washer, two 80-pound washers, three 160-pound washers, and four 200-pound dryers, in addition to three thermal patch machines and installation. If we do not remain in-house and we decide to outsource, we will obviously not have that extra cost, so there would be none. Maintenance. Like I mentioned before, we've spent about $30,000 over the last year in maintenance costs. I understand that if we remain in-house and we purchase new equipment, that those maintenance costs are going to be down initially. I understand that. However, warranties expire. Equipment will eventually need to have maintenance or upkeep, preventive maintenance as well. So I anticipate, even though that number's going to not be there initially, it's eventually going to start coming back up, okay? If we remain in-house. If we outsourced, then of course, there's not going to be any maintenance fees. Utilities. Utilities was very difficult for me to come up with the price. I couldn't put a number on that simply because we get all of our utility bills for the entire facility. I don't have a way of breaking it down just specifically to the laundry department. What I can tell you, however, is we do have, we do use about 8,300 gallons of water a day, which is about 300, or, excuse me, 3,029,000 gallons of water a year. If we were not operating, we would not have that water usage. I can also tell you that our equipment is obviously run on electricity, and it operates maybe six hours a day, seven days a week. So again, if we outsourced, we would not have that expense. Okay. Considerations. As I mentioned before, yes, the dollar amount is important, but I think we also need to look at some of those other considerations. First and foremost, layoffs. If we outsource, we are looking at laying off individuals. I imagine there's going to be questions about that, so I know that there are a couple of representatives from HR here that can answer those questions for you. There are some HR representatives here to answer that question for you when I'm, once I'm finished here. Okay. Purchasing new machines. This is not something that we can do slowly. We can't just slowly bring them in. We're going to have to do it immediately. Use all the equipment that we had, so if we decide to remain in-house, we're going to need to make that purchase quickly. If we decide to purchase new machines, like I said, warranties will come with them. They'll eventually expire, of course, and the machines have an expected lifespan of about 15 to 20 years. So at some point down the road, we'll be having this discussion again, or somebody will be having this discussion again. Seamstress. Again, we've talked about this already. The seamstress is important because it can help us save linens. It can help us save the youth center jumpsuits. Instead of throwing away a jumpsuit that has a broken zipper, I can have the zipper replaced, and then I can continue to use it. I threw in a piece there about the additional cost for zippers because I did want to point out that if we do go with Ameritech, they will charge us additional for the zippers, however CSI will not. Resident clothing. Currently, the health center washes resident clothing about four days a week. If we outsource, we're looking at potentially six to seven days a week. Both bidders are not interested in doing it seven days a week, but we will work something out with them. Nursing staff. This is a key point. Nursing staff currently does the laundry sorting of the resident clothing. The laundry staff washes it. The laundry staff hangs it up. The laundry staff puts those items like socks and T-shirts and things of that nature into a bag and delivers it to the neighborhood. Once it's on the neighborhood, it's up to the nursing staff to sort it and to, you know, put the socks together, fold the T-shirts, whatever, and then deliver it to the residents. On average, they're spending about 27 hours a week doing that job. If we were to outsource, that would be 27 hours freed up of their time to take care of more specific resident needs. Okay. If we outsource with Ameritech, one of the differences as far as cost goes is Ameritech has indicated that for closet packaging, which is basically the separation of the resident clothing and the separation of carts, they will charge us more per pound. They're looking at charging us 44 cents a pound. And what that means as far as the carts go is we will tell them how we want our carts loaded. I want 20 blankets on a cart. I want 20 gowns on a cart. And they will fill those to meet our specifications. If we go with CSI, CSI is not charging us an additional rate to do that sorting or to hang up the resident clothing. So there's a big difference between the two. Working environment and duty changes. For the staff that remain, if we outsource, there will be some significant working environment changes that may actually be more pleasant for them. No longer will they have to rip open laundry bags and individually sort particular items, like throw a gown here, throw a T-shirt here, or whatever the case may be. What they will be doing now is they will simply be separating bags. Each neighborhood will have a color-coded bag, so they'll take all the red bags and put it in a bin, all the pink bags and put it in a bin, and then they will be sent off to whichever company, you know, we would, should we decide to go with, and then they would separate them there. So no longer would we have that responsibility. In addition to that, the responsibilities would change as far as the personal resident clothing. Instead of having the nursing staff spend 27 hours a week putting the clothing, sorting and putting the clothing away, this will now become the job of the laundry workers. The laundry workers will be taking the clothing up to the neighborhoods, putting them away, having an opportunity to interact more with the residents of the neighborhoods. So that's going to be a big change for them, but one that I think that they will welcome. Requires, required purchases for hamper liners. We've already talked about that a little bit. As far as if we go with Ameritech, we would need to purchase our liners through them. Bedpads, I won't belabor that any longer either. We did talk about them. Hangers are provided if we outsource. We spend about $1,200 a year on hangers. If we outsource, both Ameritech and CSI have agreed to provide the hangers for us. An additional perk that CSI has thrown in is that they are willing, at our request, to cut and surge any items that we can use for rags. I am over housekeeping. I can tell you that we use a lot of rags, and this would be an additional savings to us if we were able to use those rags as opposed to having to purchase rags. In addition to that, CSI, they x-ray everything that's going in and out of their facility. They do that more so for their own purposes because of the people they have working in their laundry, that it is a correctional facility. However, it's beneficial for us because that's where we're going to find dentures. We're going to find glasses. We're going to find hearing aids, things of that nature. Because they're coming down in color-coded bags, they will be able to, CSI would be able to say, oh, okay, this is a pink bag. I know this bag comes from Miracle Gardens, perhaps, and they'll be able to return those glasses or dentures directly to that neighborhood, which will be very beneficial for us. Currently, the CSI provides laundry services to the Douglas County Department of Corrections. I did talk to Mark Foxel, and he has indicated to me that they have provided them with a satisfactory service. Both are, actually, all three of our facilities are accredited. Ameritech is accredited by the Healthcare Laundry Accreditation Council, and of course, the health center and CSI meet all regulatory and OSHA compliance. Recommendation. Based on all of the information that I have gathered, it is my recommendation that the Douglas County Health Center and the Douglas County Youth Center laundry be outsourced. Though I'm certain both Ameritech Services and Cornhusker State Industries are capable of providing this service, I do believe that Cornhusker State Industries will provide us more for our tax dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jennifer. The first one that I'm aware of comes from trustee Kraft.
Yes. A couple thoughts here. Additional space that would be, that we would gain by getting rid of the current equipment. Have we plans on how that could be used?
No, but I can tell you that we are always in need of space, and so definitely the area that laundry is currently in would be beneficial, and it would be used wisely.
If we choose to outsource, what is the timeframe it would take to gear up on both sides?
Based on the information that I read in the bids, they'd both be willing to, you know, they're going to start immediately. They would both be willing to jump in immediately. I anticipate that it's going to take a good six months to smooth everything out, but the initial process, maybe about a month.
Okay. You mentioned that you're going to keep the scales, and you're going to keep one of the hot patch machines. Is there any other equipment you would keep for in-house quick access or emergency use?
As far as washers go?
Washers and dryers.
You know, the neighborhoods have washers and dryers on them, so if there were any little items that needed to be washed, they could be washed right on the neighborhoods. But as far as down in that department specifically, no, we would not retain anything.
And, hold on a second. You mentioned that the bid also included the $15,000 paid by the youth center.
That's correct.
Now, when you say it includes the $15,000, would you explain exactly what you mean by that? I have two different competing thoughts.
Right. The dollar amount that I indicated on the slide as far as the laundering expense, the $60,300, that, for the health center, that laundry expense is chemicals and supplies, things like that. But for the youth center, that laundering expense- But for the youth center, that laundering expense is the $15,000 that they pay us to do their laundry. And that's included in the overall, um, dollar amount.
So, you mean, you mean you reduce the overall dollar amount by that $15,000?
Certainly, certainly would if we outsourced, yes.
Okay. And if you, reading the numbers, if you factor out the machinery and repair, we're very close to Ameritech's. I'm not saying that, you know, we're anywhere near close. There's still a $100,000 difference going with CSI. But, um, uh, the, I, I do think Ameritech's gave us a very competitive bid. That doesn't mean I need, think we should go with it, but, um, yeah. Nothing else at the moment. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Trustee Boyle.
Thanks, Sam. Uh, yes, thank you. The presentation was excellent. You did a really good job. I, I wish that we had that in front of us because I wanted to refer to some. I scrambled to make some notes. I'm curious about, first off, talk about the employees. You said that you've got one supervisor and seven employees with two vacancies and you're going to go to one supervisor and three employees, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so what happens to the others?
Um, I would defer that to Tim McNally or Lee LeJure if they're in the, if they're here.
Morning, Tim.
Tim McNally, Human Resources. We have done a, just a preliminary review of the contract in terms of how it's worded, in terms of what happens to these employees. And saying that, basically, what I'm going to talk about is what, as if it happened today because vacancies and that sort of thing can change down the road. But the bottom line is with these four employees, there would be a, either a full-time or part-time spot for all of them based on the vacancies we currently have in, in the department and in the Health Center. Primarily, that would be in the housekeeping area because right now, I believe Jennifer has one full-time housekeeping person, four full-time, I'm sorry, one full-time housekeeping vacancy for part-time housekeeping vacancies. And basically, the, the contract specifies a sequence in terms of first looking at vacancies and then there is the potential that they would be allowed to bump other employees, but that would be based on whether they meet the minimum qualifications of those kind of jobs as well. But there, as we speak, you know, things can change with the number of vacancies you may have, you know, two weeks or four weeks from now. But there would be spots for all four, either full-time or part-time. Now, given there would be some pay cuts, most likely, there might be hour, hour cuts as well.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that we're not just shoving these people out the door because I, I suppose we could go through each one of them without mentioning names and how long they've been here. Um, and, you know, one of the selling points for us going along with what we're doing at the Health Center was that we have this terrific staff that everybody loves and everybody gets along with, and then we're doing these things where people are possibly going to be fired. And I just find that hypocritical and contradictory. That's my opinion. I think, I, I do not like contracting services. I think there's a whole lot of loyalty that's lost. If the two of you were contracted, you'd come down with a different point of view. We couldn't touch you, maybe, I don't know. I just, of course, we can't anyway, but I just, I, we, you lose a lot when you contract employees. You lose loyalty. You lose their interest in the job. They don't have ownership. You don't know who's going to be there the next day. So, anyway, I'm, I'm not real happy with contracting in the first place, but if there is a plan to try to keep them on, and I would like to see it, you know, I can't imagine a pay cut. What are they making an hour average?
Fifteen.
About $15 an hour.
Fifteen, so you'd cut them, what, to nine?
Uh, probably more than that. Honestly, we haven't done that much analysis yet, for sure.
Yeah. Well, I just think that's, you know, see, those sorts of things have a ripple effect in the community. What that does is it could push our employees, which there are several over and working for the state across in the rotunda, the people when you pay your parking tickets in that whole area back there, and a lot of those state employees are on food stamps because of the low wages they're paid. And that just kicks in a lot of other expenses that, you know, could be avoided if we've paid a living wage, which we'll never get to probably, but if we paid a decent wage, which we'll probably never get to. But if we cut them from 15, which I, anyway, if they're paying, if you're getting paid 15 and cut them to nine or 10 or something, it's a loss. I mean, it, it really puts pressure on families for kids. I mean, the whole thing is not a good deal. It seems small, but it affects families. This, this will affect families. And the other thing is I, I just don't like contracting, so that's my personal opinion. So, I guess then the other side of the coin is that if we're finding them all jobs, then where's the savings? You know, I mean, if you're coming down and going to get rid of this department, you'd expect to get rid of the employees. That's my other hat. If you're going to be doing these things, then we should be saving money and we won't be on the employees unless we, except for the people who get their wages cut. And then, of course, the expense of general assistance could go up. So, anyway, it doesn't sound like such a hot deal for the employees. That's my first impression. Uh, I do have other questions that I'd like to ask. I appreciate you coming down and, and would like to know, you know, as you get, you gave an excellent report. I appreciate it. It was very helpful. And some of the notes that I made, they're kind of spotty, but you mentioned a seamstress that you don't, don't have one. So, you have a lot of things that go unrepaired and maybe ripped and they get worse and turn into rags and all that sort of stuff.
That's correct.
Uh, how long ago did you have a seamstress, did you say?
It's been quite some time.
Okay.
Probably about five years.
So, um, a lot of this material has been discarded and thrown away because it wasn't repaired, and so it's 25, 25,675 for a seamstress, which seems like a pretty good, good deal. And I, I think that's really, is the state offering that same service?
Yes, yes, but, but at no additional charge.
Yeah. There's no such thing as a free lunch. I mean, I know they're prisoners. They're prisoners doing the sewing, but, you know, they do have to make eight, eight cents an hour or whatever it is. So, there is a charge. That's, it's just difficult. It, it pretty much skewed your presentation when you said it was zero for the, for the prison because there, there's expenses that are there and will show up later. I mean, I think this is, in my estimation, this is kind of like the, the deal where you go in and lowball and get the contract and then all hell breaks loose. That's my opinion. So, I, I, I think that's really a good thing to use the seamstress. I'm glad to see you doing that. One of the, uh, I made a note here and I'm not sure what I, what it really means. I was writing fast. It's Ameritech's and bedpads are discounted. What is, what do you suppose I meant?
What that means is we're currently contracting with Ameritech to, they provide us with pads, bedpads for our residents. They also launder those bedpads. What they are offering is if we go with Ameritech as our, as our vendor, they will sell us at a discounted rate so that we own the pads. Those will be pads that are currently in circulation, so they would sell those, those pads to us at a discounted rate.
Okay. And to get this laundry ready, how do you, and a lot of, a lot of this material is soiled, seriously soiled, which is a big issue. How is that handled when it's prepared to go to the state? Do our employees gather up those soiled sheets and so forth and put them in a bag or what happens?
And are you asking as far as what we do currently or if we outsource?
Let's do both.
Currently, what happens is the laundry come down, they come down chutes from the floors. The laundry staff goes to where the chutes drop out at the chute rooms. They pick up the laundry, they're, they're in bags, put them in a big cart.
Who puts, who puts them in the bags?
The nursing staff up on, up on the neighborhoods.
Upstairs, so the nursing staff will still be doing that.
That's correct. They'll still, you know, change the linen or, you know, gowns or whatever, put them in the linen hamper bags. Those are thrown down the chute. The laundry workers then go into the chute room, they grab the bags and put them in a big bin on wheels. That bin on wheels is then wheeled to the laundry department and weighed and then goes into our soiled area. In the soiled room, the laundry worker that works there tears open the bags and sorts the bags, okay?
And they'll do that, they'll do that with both contracts?
No, that's what they're doing now.
Doing now, okay.
That's what they're doing now.
Excuse me, go ahead.
So, what they do then, and they're in full PPE as far as gown, gloves, shoe covers, the whole works. What they'll do is they'll sort those, they'll sort, sort them, there's bins in front of them, oops, there's bins in front of, in front of them, and then they'll put them in each individual bin. So, if it's a towel, it goes in this bin. If it's a gown, it goes in that bin. If it's, you know, a sheet, it goes in that bin.
A sheet with diarrhea on it goes where?
Potentially into the bin, into the bin. The bedpans prevents, the bedpads prevent some of that getting on the sheets, but certainly we do have some items that are grossly soiled.
That's right.
But they, they will separate those out now.
Okay.
If we outsource, that's no longer going to be a part of their job.
Okay.
What they would do now is they would just simply take the bag and if the bags, I anticipate that the bags will be color-coded per neighborhood, and they will take that bag and they will separate it by bag. So, all of the pink bags will go together. All of the red bags will go together into a bin that's then placed at a dock where one of the providers, whether it be Ameritech or CSI, come and pick it up. And then they are responsible for sorting it once it gets to their facility.
Okay.
And I guess on, on that same note, I would say that as far as the contractors go, they will never get anywhere further into the building than at the dock. It'll, it'll still be Douglas County staff.
Okay. Are the, is Ameritech and the prison industry is going to speak to us today?
Um, I believe they're both here, so, yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I'd, I'm looking forward to them speaking too as well, but you did make an excellent presentation, but I would like to have a copy of that if I could because there's some areas there that I, I really don't agree with. I mean, it's, um, I don't mean to put it this way, but it, it looked like it was really an effort to show that it was a better deal with the prison industries.
I tried to keep it very fair.
I know. You tried to keep it neutral, but in my book, I guess I'm, I'm not convinced. I, the biggest problem, and I don't know if we have the information or not, did we get that information, Joe? Patrick?
Commissioners, the building that Ameritech operates out of.
Excuse me, they, they don't know what you're talking about.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle had asked for the property taxes that Ameritech pays for the building that they operate out of. The building that Ameritech operates out of is owned by something called 1321 LLC, which is located at 1321 South 20th Street. That property is valued at $576,200 and for 2013, the property tax paid on that building was $12,294.78. Do you, I do not know, and the assessor, I talked to Mike Goodway, he doesn't know if that, if Ameritech owns that building or has a lease with this company called 1321 LLC.
How about personal property?
Personal property is minimal. They have some equipment that's aged, so it's a, it's a minimal amount. Like, if you need the exact number, I think I can probably pull that for you. But Roger, Mike Goodway wrote it down, showed it to me. Uh, it's pretty minimal.
Okay. But it's, it's more than the state pays. Okay.
So, that's a building on 20th?
20th Street.
1321 South 20th Street.
Is there, is there any other, well, we can ask the Ameritech's when they come to the podium, but if there's any other property that they own that they pay property taxes on. So, in my book, that would cut the, that would cut the savings by at least $12,294. If, if this company doesn't have income, it can't pay it property taxes. And I have, I think this is a policy issue that we need to talk about. Are, are we going to, are we going to support government taking away industry and work from a private enterprise that's taxpaying? They have employees as well. What's going to happen to their staff? So, I, I think it's, it's a policy issue beyond just the dollars and cents. I think it's a big deal, you know? I just, I really have a, have strong feelings about that. And private industry, I think, needs to be respected and supported. So, I appreciate, you did an excellent job on that and I'd like to have a copy of that report.
I'd be happy to send it to you.
Okay. And then when this is all over, what is, what is your job in general?
My title is Director of Support Services.
Okay.
And I'm currently over laundry, housekeeping, let's see, laundry, housekeeping, security, safety, employee health, radiology, the county morgue.
You got a couple of things going.
Just a few.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
She's on the pension.
Oh, good.
Also the secretary on the pension board, yeah.
Good. Thank you. You did, really did a great job. I appreciate it, but I would like a copy.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thanks.
Thank you. And I will say I am not planning on calling on the representatives unless they will certainly have the opportunity to address us if they so choose.
Thank you.
Uh, the next question is from Trustee Borgeson.
Um, first of all, I echo too. I mean, this has been one of probably the best presentations we've had when we're trying to make a decision.
Right.
Um, and you can tell by not only the PowerPoint that you presented, but your presentation of it is superb, so thank you. It was very, very well done. Um, this, I mean, I can't really disagree with a lot of what Commissioner Boyle said, but at the same time, I can remember sitting in this chamber and when we decided not to outsource the entire Health Center, my question to everybody in that, in the audience was there are recommendations that HMA has provided to us that say we need to look at outsourcing certain support services. Is everybody willing to do that? And they, I asked them to raise their hand and they raised their hands. So, now it's kind of where the rubber meets the road. We have hard decisions to make when we have recommendations from a 300 and some thousand dollar study that was done that potentially could save us over $361,000 if we go this route. To me, I mean, that's, that's kind of a, a telling tell. I too am concerned with the staff, but at the same time, you know, these are taxpayer dollars and we have to use them as best and wisely as we can. I'm all for, and HR laid it out pretty well, if I understood it, was that we could potentially find workers, other jobs within county government that are vacant or however that process works. I think what you've also laid out in terms of what the staff will do that stay is also a plus, and I liked hearing that. And so, I'm, I guess today anyway, I'm in support of moving forward with this. I think there isn't any more study or questions in my book. You've just done the most thorough job that, again, that I've seen in a presentation and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Because these are hard decisions that this board has to make, but at the same time, we can't continue to talk out of both sides of our mouths saying that we can't spend any more money and then once we find a savings, you know, we kind of back off of what we're supposed to be doing. So, um, I'm ready to move on it. I thank you for your presentation and the good work on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Kraft.
I do have a question for Ameritech's. Mark, could you come up?
Morning. My name is Mark Goldsstrom. I'm the CEO of Ameritech Services.
On the chance that you were awarded the contract, how many additional employees or would you need to hire additional employees and if so, how many? I love putting, I love putting people on the spotlight.
No, no. Let, let me say, first of all, we are currently doing some of the work for the Douglas County Health Center. We're laundering their underpads and because the machinery has been broken down, we're laundering a good percentage of their other linen. So, we would probably have to put on probably, I'm guessing in the neighborhood of three people.
Okay, thank you. That was the only question I had, and that's plain off what Commissioner Boyle had said.
Okay, thank you.
The, the, I, I have no problem contracting this service out. There are some I would have a problem with. And Commissioner Boyle, I want you to think back to a meeting in room 903 with the company. It wasn't HMA, it was part of HMA. I don't remember the three.
Health Dimensions.
Health Dimensions, okay. You were ready at that meeting to outsource on that day the entire operation.
That's right.
So, there's a conflict here and, and I'm trying to resolve how you can feel one way on a much more massive scale than here on a much more minor scale. And it just seems like a major conflict to me.
You and your memory. Well, I, if I could, yeah. Well, Madam Chair, I really followed along with at least one other commissioner that the presentation that was made was made by a company that was equivalent, if not, to a five-star operation, and offered a lot of experiences and good experiences and other companies, other facilities that they had run. And I was thinking primarily about the million dollars a month that we're pumping into the health center, and that that could be wiped out. And so I was very much ready to roll with it because they had such a great record. And so I was impressed, and I probably would have voted to do it that day. In the meantime, we've had a lot of presentations about the value of the employees and also, you know, just the way that they know people who live there. The people who live there know them, they're familiar with them. And that's, that's something that's really worth a lot. And so I did turn on the dime. I generally, I'm a very big supporter of unions and union employees and employees in general. And so, but I was blinded, I guess, by the great presentation this fellow made that made a great deal of sense at the time. But on matters such as this, I've got other things to say, so I won't monopolize it. Thank you. But that's why I flipped, so to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Boyle. Any other questions from Commissioners? Trustee Morgan?
I want to thank you for your due diligence, your presentation. And I make a motion, and I think the majority of us are probably ready to make a decision, that we go ahead and go with Cornhesser State Industries as the low bidder on this and save the $321,000.
Well, we have, we have other people who want to speak.
There will be ample opportunity for everybody to speak before any votes are taken.
At least we'd have it on the floor.
Correct.
If there's a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to accept the bid of CSI. Further discussion? Any, any other? Trustee Boyle?
Well, I'd like to ask Mr. Goldstrom to come to the podium again for Ameritech. I've got a couple of questions.
I'd like to apologize for blurting out my name in these meetings. I don't know the procedure.
You're part of sausage being made, it's okay.
As long as you don't have any tomatoes, you're okay. Would you give your name and your address again, please?
Yes. Mark Goldstrom, CEO of Ameritech Services. My home address?
No, that's fine. That's enough. I, I'm, I did two-year plant. It's, received a phone call from your son some time ago and went down and was amazed by, first of all, the facility, the way it operates and the efficiencies. And the people there really seemed tuned in and very much comfortable around you, which was really kind of nice to see. Sometimes when owners and managers walk through a place, people get pretty uptight. Yours didn't. Tells me that you run a really good ship from treating employees, which I thought was, that was my impression, and I think it's probably correct. The work that you do is, I mean, you really work with some products that are soiled and contaminated and so forth, and you really seems to be, have the whole system down pretty well. And I, you know, I did ask the assessor's office, you know, what's your paying, you know, in property taxes? And is there any other property that is associated with this laundry operation on which you pay property taxes?
Yes, thank you for asking that. We have a distribution center about two blocks to the north of our main laundry, 16,000 square feet. I would say the property taxes are somewhere around two-thirds of what these are, so they could be $6,000 to $8,000 a year. Plus, we have trucks, six vehicles, that we pay property taxes on, registered every year.
So we're probably talking about $41,000 in taxes, something like that, plus the vehicles and so forth. And of course, plus you're paying, paying the FICA and other federal taxes as well and state taxes as well on your employees. This, this is where I have a difficult time when we have a state industries. I went through this on another, another issue, not two, quite a while ago, I guess, when the prison industries were competing against a private company. You know, your, your investment, I mean, I really believe in what you're doing, private enterprise in general. I mean, just, you know, supporting local businesses and doing what we can to make you successful. And I think one of the things we do that harms them is to take away business. You know, one time this board considered and tried to award a contract to a Nebraska company over an Iowa company, just to keep it in Nebraska. I don't know if you remember that or not. And we got in big trouble because that's not allowed in Nebraska. Iowa can do that. When the Potawatomi County Board is looking at a contractor to do work in Iowa, and it's a Nebraska contractor and an Iowa contractor, they're clear to say, we're going with the Iowa contractor because they're here. Nebraska, we can't do that. But we can also, you know, express ourselves about how we feel about private industry and keeping it local. I mean, I personally try to shop local as much as I can, just because it helps. It helps the whole economy. So that's one of the big reasons. But the other is that I've seen your plant, and I know how it operates. You're right here in town, you're down on 20th Street, and you're doing laundry for the facility already and so forth. So I want to ask you what you thought about some of the things that you saw on the slides that really pretty much kind of, in some cases, preferred CSI over you. Did you have anything that jumped out at you that you'd like to clarify?
Well, more so the things that didn't jump, that weren't there.
Okay.
If I could take a minute?
Of course.
Okay. We've been doing products, laundering products for the Douglas County Health Center for 25 years. We've never missed a delivery. We don't have issues with quality. We're less than two miles away. I don't think there'll ever be a chance that we won't be able to make a delivery in the wintertime because of the proximity. I can't compete dollar for dollar with the prison because our people do make a livable wage. They have nice benefits. But I think it's a mistake to compare a healthcare laundry like Ameritech's to a prison laundry for many reasons. When it was mentioned that the prison laundry follows regulatory compliance and OSHA compliance, let me tell you, that's a paragraph, maybe, on how things should be laundered. Ameritech is proud to be accredited by the Healthcare Laundry Accreditation Council. And I'll go into detail what that is in a second. But in this day and age of hospital-acquired infections, I say hospital because the health center is closer to a hospital environment than a hotel environment. You can't be too careful about what's out there and the biohazards that exist. And we, our book, being accredited, is maybe this thick. Several, I wanted to say 100 pages, but, but a lot of pages. It's thick. The compliance requirements are everything from the type of machinery, the chemicals we use, the airflow in the building. We have to have airflow going from the clean end toward the soiled end. You wouldn't want to open a door at the clean end and suck a bunch of air in going from the soil to the clean end. So we have a barrier wall set up, as well as fans on the clean side creating positive pressure, and fans on the soil side creating negative pressure. And we also have a monitor set up in that barrier wall, so if that would ever fail, an alarm would go off. As far as lost items that are found in bags by the x-ray, we find lost items every day from, we do most of the hospitals in Omaha. We launder the, all the Allegiant hospitals, as well as from the Nebraska Medical Center hospitals. And we find very, very expensive hospital devices that we always return and can return to the proper hospital because of the way we sort things when they come in from the customer. We know who the customer is. Regarding the surging of rags, we'd be happy to do that. We weren't asked, as far as I know, we weren't asked. But we would be happy to do that at no charge as well. The other thing about the, getting back to the Healthcare Laundry Accreditation Council, I'm going to ask Amy if she might, if so can, pass out some pieces of paper to you. The H, and I'll refer to Healthcare Laundry Accreditation Council as HLAC. It's a third-party independent organization that gives us the scrutiny that no other laundry would have, as far as making sure that we are in compliance at all times, including an inspection.
Thank you.
I know that the prison x-rays clean linen coming in, and I hope there's a chance for them to address things that might not show up on an x-ray machine. I mean, would a broken plate show up with sharp edges? I don't know. And what's, what's your guarantee, or excuse me, I should say their guarantee, that they're going to catch every sharp that comes in? We get sharps all the time. A sharp is defined as any non-linen item that could puncture the skin. We get things all the time that would be considered sharps, from needles to broken plates to scalpels. We were told when we did the tour of the Douglas County Health Center that there's two to three sharps a month that they find currently. Excuse me, four to six. Concern for laundry employees. Our employees are trained and retrained on handling biohazards. We consider everything to be infected or a biohazard because we don't know what is and what isn't. So we use what's called universal precautions, which means that the, anything from the gowning up of the employee who handles the soiled, to the gloves, to the bouffant on the head, to the handwashing, are all covered in all of our compliance procedures. Can anyone be certain that a non-accredited laundry would be able to protect their workers to the extent that we do? Amongst a lot of other redundant equipment, we have two high-capacity tunnel washers. You put your soiled linen in one end, 40 feet later, it comes out clean. If one of those tunnel washers breaks down, we have a backup. So you're never, ever going to be without service from Ameritech Services. That doesn't happen. We have a backup steam boiler. Most laundries use steam to iron items and to wash, you know, heat the water. We have a backup boiler in the event that our main boiler would break down. Oh, we have a backup generator. In the event we lose electricity, we have a generator onsite that can run our entire facility indefinitely. And as you know, as well as I know, we lose electricity now and again. And because Douglas County Health Center works on a 24/7 basis, we know that we have to be available on a 24/7 basis. I mentioned earlier that we have a 25-year track record of never letting down the Douglas County Health Center. And I can assure you that our mission is to keep laundry off of the radar screen of all of you. We don't want it ever to show up as a problem, and it certainly would not. Well, that's about all. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
So you basically, how much stock are you putting that accreditation makes your service that more valuable?
How much stock? I think it makes all the difference in the world. If that was the only difference, it would be worth, as far as I'm concerned, spending a little extra money for that assurance.
Trustee Borgerson?
Basically, no questions for you, but to me, what we're talking about here was not, to Commissioner Boyle's point about private versus governmental. We have a bidding process, and within those bid specs, we didn't outline anything about wanting to favor or lean towards or make sure that we have only private industry that make, that places bids with us. And so I think we're treading on some shaky water here by bringing that up now. To me, it was a fair process. It's a bidding process. You, I know you know it, you're, you do it all the time. And so I think by changing rules, if that's, I don't think that's what Commissioner Boyle is implying right now, but for future ones, that has to be laid out in the bid specs, in my opinion.
Can I, can I address that? I mentioned earlier comparing a healthcare laundry to a prison laundry is like night and day. When you think of laundry, let's think of a commodity, excuse me, a commodity you buy at the grocery store, milk. You go to one grocery store and buy vitamin D milk. It has one name on it. You go to another grocery store, buy vitamin D milk. It has a name on it, but it's the same milk. That's not the case when it comes to laundries.
Did you bring this up at the pre-bidding conference meeting?
Probably not.
Well, again, that's what I'm, I'm, I respect everything that you're saying, but we had a bidding process, and we didn't put within those bid specs anything to the point of making sure that there was only private enterprise versus a non-private enterprise that placed a bid with us. And so that's all I'm saying, is that I think that we're stepping out of our normal process. We, when we choose bids, for as long as I can remember, I don't remember having all of a sudden a whole nother discussion of the vendors being able to come up and try to sell their service to us. And so I'm just, just cautioning us that we're overstepping what we normally do. And if I was the other bidder, I would feel a little uneasy about this. And so it was, again, a fair process, a very open process. You all were at the bidding, pre-bidding meeting. You all took the tours. You all had your questions to be asked at that point. You all put in fair bids, and the bids came back. And so I'm just hoping we're not leaning towards trying to change the direction to which we, we're on right now. That's all.
Trustee Rogers, did you?
No.
Okay. Trustee, thank you. Trustee Boyle?
I'm not, I'm not trying to change any rules. And I knew from the outset that the prison was going to be competing. And I, and I pretty much knew what the outcome would be. When you have one company that has a payroll, and we didn't ask him what his payroll was, but when he has a payroll to meet, and then you have another, a competitor that has virtually none, I mean, that's a pretty big item for starters. When you have one, one of the bidders paying taxes and the other one is not, I mean, that's a big deal. And so, I mean, I, I'm not changing the rules. I'm just discussing, you know, we've, a motion's on the floor to award a bid to one of the companies. And I just, I don't think it's extraordinary to ask them to speak to some of the questions that are there, because I think it makes a difference. I think we have a, you know, I think we have a company in Omaha that has done the work, that is doing the work, that's reliable, that's, all of you believe so strongly in certification, I don't. But all of you believe so strongly in this certification concept that it's ironic that you would reject it. Ironic that I would support it.
Indeed.
So anyhow, I mean, it's, I'm not trying to change the rules, Commissioner Borgerson. I think this is a good time to discuss these, these two possible contractors and point out the differences and point out deficiencies and point out all these things. I, I frankly don't think it's a level playing field when you bring in someone who is, doesn't pay taxes to compete against somebody who does. I think right at the beginning, it's tough, if not impossible. And I would like to hear from prison industries and also from the union before we make our, take our vote. I think it's an important issue, myself.
The podium will be open for anybody that wishes to address this board, of course.
I appreciate that.
And in fact, I would say at this point, before the board takes a vote, is there anybody from the public that would like to share any thoughts or comments? This would be the opportunity. Now is the time. Speak now or forever hold your peace.
Oh, he won't.
I've got plenty to talk about. I don't know if, I don't think there's going to be enough time.
He will never hold his peace.
Yeah. My name is Raymond Ranz, and I represent ULA. I will tell you, and I know you've seen me more than you probably have in 20 years, in part because the only positions that are being proposed to be eliminated on this outsourcing, whether it be the laundry, or now there's discussions at PBX, are union positions, ULA positions, not any other union. So as you might expect, we have a big So as you might expect, we have a big concern relating to this. I also have a concern procedurally in that what we are being, you know, what we're being told is, well, you know, we're just getting bids to see what the cost is going to be, and then I show up here today, and we've got a motion on the floor that we're going to choose, we're going to choose We were told last week, these are business decisions. Well, one thing that wasn't identified in the presentation that was given to you, and it's a huge issue, and it's expensive, is the fact that the county hospital has been paying anywhere from $10,000 to $13,000 a month because the washing machines have been down for several years. They've been paying it to Ameritech. Now, just think, for two years, how much machinery that could buy? If you're really running a business, you invest in your machinery, you invest in your capital, you invest in your equipment. That hasn't been done, and that falls on this hospital administration. They could have been looking forward. They could have said, listen, we'll invest in ourselves and get this done. The savings, you know, the difference actually in keeping us and buying this equipment is a one-year savings of anywhere from 200 and some thousand, or about 225,000, at least according to Ms. Byshine, although Ms. Byshine has not shown us or anybody else where she got her numbers for buying the equipment. We're finding that the equipment may be 40% to 50% less than that $225,000. And I don't know how you can make a decision today without actually having something in front of you saying, well, this is what this machinery is going to cost. These are important decisions. These are the types of business decisions that any business would look at. I've mentioned this before. You're eliminating, and don't get me wrong, I mean, you're saying, well, they can move to other positions. There's one other open position, and maybe we've got some part-time positions here. And that potentially has a domino effect for other ULA members as well. But there are, I've mentioned this before about, you know, too many management, too many people in management. You've got a department there in the county hospital where an employee, where one supervisor supervises one employee. Do you know what happens? He has a purchase order. He gives it to his supervisor. That supervisor gives it to the CFO. CFO sends it back to that supervisor, and then it goes back to that employee. Now, that is a waste of county dollars. That's, those are the things this administration, this county administration should be looking at. I will also mention, as much as everybody's relying on any HMA recommendations, there is a recommendation in there to outsource the management of this hospital. The management, the executive staff of this hospital costs the taxpayers $750,000 a year in salaries. That's not counting all the other fringe benefits. They're significant savings, far more than getting rid of four people that make anywhere from $13,000 to $15,000 an hour. So if you're talking about saving taxpayer dollars, this isn't the approach. This isn't the way to do it. I mean, I can go on. I mean, you've got, you've got people there that are willing to take on more during these discussions that we've had. And there haven't been very many, but during the discussions that we've had, we've told them, we'll take on some of these other responsibilities that people are doing as regarding the laundry. I think they're, you know, the nurses are doing some of the folding, the hanging of the clothes or whatever. They're handling some of that. We said we'd take it on. As it is, we haven't gripped on the fact that we're understaffed right now. There are two positions that ideally should come into play, and they're not. As concerns the work that's left for the four, three or four people that are going to stay, essentially, these people are going to be pack mules. All they're going to be doing is lifting and pulling and making sure that the laundry gets to the docks. That means that you've got the potential for increased back injuries, work comp claims, and that's got to go to the bottom line. At least now, with the people they have, having those three extra people, they can rotate those jobs amongst the seven people and not have that kind of stress and strain on their back. I mean, it's just those types of things that weren't in this presentation. Was it a good presentation? Sure, it was great. I mean, it looked good. You had a slideshow. You had all that. But you got the devils in the details. It's in all of these things that we know, that the people in my department know. I'm pretty sure that the executive staff spent more time, both at Ameritech and at CSI, looking at what they do than they did going down to the laundry department. They don't go down to the laundry department. They don't shadow what our people do. They don't know that, like, when there's clothing that's really stained or sheets that are really stained, that our people actually make sure and try to get those stains out. I mean, just those types of things that make a difference. So if you really, again, I'd have to agree with the Ameritech CFO, or CEO, you're seeing that, you know, you get what you pay for. And at least with his contract, he pays people a fair wage, and he, and they pay a decent pension and everything like that. And that is the difference. But then, if you take Ameritech and you compare it to keeping things in-house, the only difference is the investment of equipment, which we haven't done. It's not the board's fault. The administration of this hospital should have been telling you, you know what, we need to replace this washer. You know what, and I bet you they'll even give it to us on time, because that $10,000 a month that's being paid to Ameritech could have put a big chunk towards paying a new washer or a new dryer. Hasn't been done, and that's irresponsible. So, I'm sorry. I think that what's being done is a disservice not only to the employees, but it's a disservice to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ranz. Trustee Borgerson?
Well, with all due respect, the administration has brought forth to this board, I'd say for the last 10 years, the issues of equipment, and we have been fixated, as we should be, on trying to reduce costs and the expenditure of taxpayer dollars. And we have said, no, we've taken out of the budget requests and discussions for a number of years. So the administration did its job. It's this board who agreed to reduce that budget by not replacing those, that equipment. The, I think Jennifer has been down to and met with the laundry on an ongoing basis, not just during this discussion. So I think you do your job well, Jennifer, as well as the laundry workers do. Nobody's saying that they're not doing a good job. What we're saying again is that this is where the rubber meets the road. We were, looked at the HMA recommendations. You did the homework for us. We're looking at the information, and now we have to make a decision. And so, again, it's, as far as the administration goes, I don't necessarily disagree with you on the number of administrators to employees. I think that's a problem countywide that we need to look at, which was brought up in our strategic plan to look at. And HR will be trying to figure out how we look at that. But we did, we sat for hours in this chamber and talked about outsourcing, not only the whole facility, but we talked about outsourcing just the management part of it, pieces of it, parts of it, and we voted not to. And so that discussion's been had and gone. Everybody seems to keep forgetting that. We had it. This chamber was full, and it's done. We opted not to do that. That didn't stop our processes, though, through looking at the rest of these HMA recommendations. And I think we're being very true and prudent to that report by continuing to follow up on those that we're saying we're going to look at, and that's what we're doing today.
Thank you. Trustee Boyle?
Yes, I'd like to ask the representative from Prison Industries to come to the podium, if there's someone here. Would you give your name and?
I'm Brian Pantsloff. I'm with Cornosker State Industries out of Lincoln, Nebraska.
Good morning. Thanks a lot for coming up. What, who does the laundry when it comes to your facility? Who does it? The inmates?
The inmates do the laundry, yes.
And are they compensated?
Yes, they are.
And what's their wage?
Anywhere from 56 cents an hour to $1.8 an hour.
$1.8?
$1.8 is the top.
And you heard Mr., you heard Gary with Ameritech describe the process they have with contaminated laundry. Do you have anything? Is that, is your facility similar?
Yep, we have a very similar process.
Okay, so you have the fans that take the air in and the air out and everything else?
Absolutely. Everything's separated, absolutely.
Okay, and so you're, the prisoners are dressed appropriately to handle all that material?
Yes, they are.
Okay, good. And so what would be your plan if you get this bid? You're driving trucks up to Omaha, or like, you're already doing that anyway, aren't you?
Yes, we're doing it now currently.
For the corrections?
Corrections, yep. And we have trucks coming and going all the time to different facilities and hospitals that we currently do laundry for.
Do you do hospitals here in Omaha?
No.
Okay. Mostly in Lincoln or someplace?
Yeah, Lincoln and a lot of small areas around Lincoln, yeah.
Okay. And I want to ask you what your opinion is of government competing with private industry, but we'll keep that to ourselves, I guess. But I do appreciate your coming to the podium and giving us that information. Do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
No, I want to thank you all for having us here today.
Since there's a motion on the floor to give you the contract, I suppose that the best thing is not to say anything more.
Brian, you might want to stick around for a minute.
I want to thank you. How long have you been in your position?
A very short time, a couple of years.
Okay. So, and so you've been managing the laundry and that sort of thing for the last few years?
Well, I'm a PICEP manager. It's, PICEP is Prison Industries Enhancement Certificate Program, and it brings private venture businesses into the prisons. That's what I, that's my job, and part of what I do is help out with laundry from time to time. So I am not the laundry expert that we're able to make it today.
And do you feel, without having the full knowledge, and I know I used to talk about this when I was a state senator, that, you know, they're making the license plates, and I said, you know, where do you get a job doing license plates? The laundry's a different situation. Do you feel this training for these individuals is a helpful thing for their future?
Oh, it absolutely is. You can see that in all of our industries, the inmates that work, the recidivism rate is much less. It's around 10% for those inmates that work in our prison industries throughout the facility versus 50%, 60% for the average inmate that doesn't hold a job.
So I, I guess, and I'm kind of leading you into this, but I know that that was one of my concerns, is that we didn't have enough of the kind of programs for vocations when they were released from, you know, the correction facility. And so now, the system has really worked to do more of that kind of thing in the training.
That's true, yeah.
So that's a positive, I think, that we want to see continued, just as citizens for the inmates for their future.
They take an awful lot of pride in the work that they do.
That's great.
And it's shown at the desk that you're currently sitting at, built by Prison Industries.
Yes, that's right.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Kraft?
Yes, I don't know who can answer. This is for either DeeDee or for Jennifer. I don't know who can answer it. Are we paying an additional $10,000 to $15,000 per month to Ameritech's for laundry services?
I'd be happy to answer that question. As I mentioned in my presentation, when we have washing machines down, especially when we have one of our two 200-pound washers down, we are, we absolutely have to send some laundry over to Ameritech, and they have been gracious enough to provide us with that service. I can tell you that since April, there has been an additional cost. It's been, we're looking at $26,000. We've had to pay extra for that laundry service.
Okay, $26,000 extra total since April?
April.
Okay.
Yes.
Was that $26,000 factored into any of the numbers you gave us today?
Not today, no, it was not.
Okay. I have to say this. My heart and my personal preference would be Ameritech. Mark Goldstrom, the CEO, and I have a friendship that goes back to his grandfather back into the 60s. My personal preference and my heart, because I know how hard it is to be in business and how hard it is to comply with all the rules and regulations and forms you have to do with in any business, along with, as I said, our longstanding relation. But there's a but here, Mark, okay? I hate to say this. But Nebraska law and the Supreme Court has said we have to take the lowest and best bid, and it defines the best bid as the lowest, as was shown in a case in Grand Island, where the city took the second lowest bid and ended up paying a lot of penalties to the lowest bid. Now, I doubt if we'd be sued in this case. You'd never know. But, yeah, that's true. I'm sorry.
That's right. Go ahead, finish.
I'll refer to our law department.
Teresa York County Attorney's Office. There was a case talking about lowest best bid, and it talks about, it was a few years back. It does, it does look at the lowest bid. It does, it did talk about a matrix and looking at other factors, but the case did focus on lowest bid and what Commissioner Kraft is saying is relevant to the discussion today. For this particular bid, I don't recall if a matrix was done. Is purchasing present?
Eric Carlson, Douglas County Purchasing.
Morning.
Good morning. To your question, the actual decision was left with the folks from the Health Center. So the proposals, I wasn't involved specifically as a member of that committee, so I'm not sure. Honestly, I don't know if Jennifer can answer to that, whether or not a matrix was utilized to ultimately drive down to the decision in looking at the pricing and other factors.
Could I just ask that you be a bit more specific in what you're looking for?
Sure. This question was raised before, not too long ago, and in looking at that case, the case talks about lowest best bid. And so, for example, when using a matrix, you can assign values to certain factors and then look at the overall score of the company. And so I don't recall whether this particular bid was done with a matrix-type analysis.
I wouldn't call it a matrix, no. Basically, what we did was we looked at the services that were provided, and did our best to put a dollar amount to it. Not all of them we could. We couldn't put a dollar amount on everything, such as utilities and things like that.
Okay, then in response to Commissioner Kraft, I would encourage the board in evaluating the bids to consider, in light of that case, the board has to consider the lowest, the lowest bid and the information provided from the Health Center, not as a matrix, but the other considerations, and consider them both. But I think that Commissioner Kraft is accurate with regards to that.
Thank you.
And just so Commissioner Boyle knows, I'm always accurate. Well, maybe not quite always. Okay, back to the lowest and best. The Supreme Court in that decision, as I recall, I was on the city council. The Supreme Court in that decision, as I recall, I was on the city council at the time watching that case, said that the lowest bid is the best bid unless there is proof that the other bidder cannot provide the service. And that outweighs all my personal preferences, that case, and has factored into many, many, many different bid factors as I process this and other bids we've had in the past. Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you. Trustee Boyle.
Well, if I understand what Teresa said, I'm not sure it's totally definitive, but it sounds like it is. So I think this does really solidify us and officially make us a rubber stamp. So all the stuff that the state tells us to do, we do. And now anybody who comes in with a low bid, because of what this case apparently says, is we have to accept it unless there's some overwhelming evidence that the next bid cannot perform. So to me, from here on out, I guess we just take the low bid and don't look at anything else, from what I hear. Isn't that about right?
That is pretty much, that is pretty much correct. That's the way I've read it since, I forgot, it was after 1997 that this was done, but I don't know when.
That's what it says, so I'll...
And it does bother me, because there are circumstances where the lowest bid is not the quote "best bid" because of all the other factors, such as paying property taxes, unless we have it in the bid specs. We want somebody who pays Nebraska property tax. I don't know if we can legally, or Nebraska taxes, excuse me. I don't know if we can legally put that into bid requirements.
If I...
Teresa?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Teresa York County Attorney's Office. If I may nutshell the case, and it would be, an easy way to say it would be, lowest is best bid when all of the things are equal, Commissioner. And so if you're looking at two bids, and that's why I was asking about the matrix, and we had a concern about a bid a few months ago, and a matrix was used, and it was scored, and this, this board did take a bid that was not quite the lowest bid, but there were many other factors that the board considered, and it was in relation to snowplows. And, and the board was able to use that matrix and say there were other factors, so the bids were not equal. The bids were not equal. And so it's the lowest best bid when, when all things, in a nutshell, when all of the things were equal.
Madam Chair?
Trustee Boyle.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I mean, I don't think these bids are equal, and I wonder why wasn't a matrix done? I mean, factored in all these things?
If, if I may respond, in my mind, this is a matrix, whether we use the word or not. You have done, you've bet over backwards to compare every factor that came into this and put it down on a sheet, try to quantify it in dollars. That's a matrix to me. Now, we may not be calling it, we might have some other word for it. I don't care. You've done a fantastic job of comparing these bids and presenting us with all of the information. There are other factors besides price. There's the sorting that, that actually gives an advantage to CSI over Ameritech. We have looked at all of the factors. I really don't like muddying the water at this point with what I consider to be artificial issues. Thank you. Trustee Boyle.
Well, you said a phrase that I, it really summed it all up, "I don't care," is what you said. So I think that's probably where we are. So let's just let it go. It's going to be another six to one vote, but that's life. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to address this issue before this board votes?
Good morning. My name is Doug Kagan, 12320 Williams Street, and I represent Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. We sat down over a year ago with the HMA representatives and looked at the study they did, and we thought it was a very fine study, very good study. Since that time, we've been very impatient with the board to see that some of their recommendations have been done, especially with outsourcing. So we would like to see you people make a quick decision here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address this board? If not, since we are meeting as Board of Trustees, this will be by voice vote rather than on the computer, and therefore, Burl, would you please call the vote?
Chair Duda?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Tusha?
Yes.
Trustee Borges?
Yes.
Trustee Kraft?
Yes.
Trustee Morgan?
Yes.
Trustee Boyle?
No, and protest.
Okay. Thank you. That motion passed.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
On the agenda is the, it says update on HMA recommendations, and there's a little sheet handed out. Trustee Borgeson and I met last week with, with Patrick and Mr. Turville and some of the exec staff, trying to come up with what will be the next HMA recommendations that we would encourage the staff to be pursuing. So, and that is in your documentation. Is there any citizens' comments to the Board of Trustees? I am not aware of any need for exec session, but Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest, when you're bringing up other subjects, the next things to look at, I think Mr. Aranzo brought up a very good point. I think we should look at the, what he pointed out is this 1, 2, 3, 4, about eight, four or five people making decisions and passing paper to each other and costing $750,000. If we're going to start contracting, let's take a real serious look and talk about big money and start talking about management, as he suggested. So I, I think that should be on the top of the agenda when you start talking about carrying out...
We voted on it a year ago.
Well, we, listen, when you get new information like that, I think we ought to be at least talking about it. What, what does it cost?
There was no new information provided. We've already voted a year ago.
Okay, I see. I see what's going on, but I'm suggesting that what we do is we take a look at what it's really costing, because I know we're going to do this, berate all these other offices that have heavy in supervision, but apparently it's hands-off on this facility. And it's, what is it still costing us monthly to pump, pump this place up?
Into the Community Mental Health Center?
Whatever it is. Community mental health is fine, but the other stuff, I mean, is, we're, if it's top-heavy, we can't put blinders on. We need to be realistic and take a look at it, and forget friendships, and do what needs to be done.
Thank you.
That's my suggestion.
And Trustee Borgeson?
Well, I just want to remind everybody that again, at some point I'll have Mr. Legere come up and do a presentation of an update on some of the strategic planning points for which we talked about and move forward. And one of those was looking at the management staff ratio of all county offices and departments, not just this.
Great, that sounds great, and the sooner the better.
Thank you. I am not aware of a need for executive session, there better not be. I am happy to declare this meeting adjourned, and I turn the floor back over to Chair Borgeson.
Thank you, Commissioner Duda.
Thank you all for a good meeting.
Thank you.
Hi, Tom.
We are going into the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Borgen, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha. Madam Chair?
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, August 19, 2014. Item B, call for a meeting, it's at Tuesday, September 9, 2014, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of amended property to the tax rule or increased value on property.
Motion for my being?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments? Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. There are two. Item D, application for tax exemption on motor vehicle recommended for denial by the County Treasurer. And item E, approving application for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the County Treasurer. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move?
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I wanted to point out that the one motor vehicle that's being denied is an older vehicle for Holy Family Catholic Church, which is involved in prison ministry and a lot of other very important things, clothing for children and so forth. To me, this kind of falls into the same category as people who, excuse me, fail to meet the deadline for homes that exemptions. The state of Nebraska has clearly defined nonprofit operations that should not be taxed, and some of us would like to see some of them taxed a little bit. But this is one of those organizations. It has a nonprofit status and is entitled to the benefits of having that status. So I understand that there was a missed, missed deadline. I don't know if it was that long, but it was missed. But it still is a nonprofit organization, serving the community, and I think deserves to have that vehicle be non-exempt, or, excuse me, be exempt. So I would make a motion that we grant the application of Holy Family Catholic Church and give them the exemption.
Teresa, we can do that?
Well, we, I mean, we can. I mean, legally, we probably can't, but we do.
Teresa York County Attorney's Office. The comparison for the motor vehicle with the property tax exemption, there is a procedure for a waiver in the property tax exemption arena. There isn't really a procedure for a waiver by this board for the motor vehicle.
So we, even if we vote, I mean, what would be the outcome? Let's say we voted to do this, what's going to take place? Somebody could file a suit or something. Would that be accurate or what, Teresa?
The decision of the county board can be appealed to, I believe, to the Tax Equalization Review Commission, if, if that were someone's desire.
If, talking about who could make an appeal, the church or a taxpayer? If we gave the exemption, the taxpayer could complain or someone else. And if we gave the exemption, excuse me, didn't give the exemption, the church could complain. Is that what you're saying? Or not? Does the church have any grounds to complain?
Commissioner, are you asking me or are you asking...
Oh, I'm asking you.
I'm sorry, sir. I don't know, I don't know if the church would complain if you granted the...
No, they wouldn't complain if you granted it.
Yes, sir.
But if we don't grant it, do they have a right to appeal to anybody?
To Turk.
Under, yes, yes, Commissioner, under 603189, if they, for motor vehicle tax, they have the right to appeal the decision of the, of the Board of Equalization, should they so choose.
So they could, they could appeal the tax exemption on the car to Turk?
I'm sorry.
Would they appeal that to Turk?
I'm sorry, did I...
Yeah, I thought you said Turk. That's a, we're the Board of Equalization.
I am looking at, Your Honor, excuse me, Commissioner, I'm just double-checking here. 603189 exemption for motor vehicle taxation under subsection 6 of, I believe that is correct. I can double-check following the meeting, but I believe that is correct, Commissioner, looking, I'm looking at, at that, yes.
Okay.
I believe I did speak correctly the first time. Thank you for double-checking with me.
Okay, well, I'd appreciate having something, I don't mean to blindside you, so I would like to have some, some kind of an answer. Nothing soon, but I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is for resolutions D and E. Please vote.
I thought I did.
Motion passes?
Next, we have two protests that were laid over from the August 19, 2014 meeting. Item F, protest of special valuation on green belt disqualification for a parcel at 13506 North River Drive, Omaha. Well, they're both there, so, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Ronald Reagan of Reagan, Milton &amp; Delaney, and I represent Mr. Weber, Bob Weber, who is the owner and the applicant for the green belt designation on these two parcels of property. And this is sort of a rerun from last year, but there are some, some new things that came to mind. If I can put this on the screen, maybe...
Flip it over.
Which way, this way?
Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
There you go. And still.
There you go.
There we go. Now, now I'm set. The, first, Chairman Borgeson, thanks for laying this over. I was actually on a short vacation last week, and when I got back and went in the office about 5:00 after 9:00, I saw that this was scheduled for last week, and so made some quick calls. Actually, when I looked at my email, I, I found that I hadn't really gotten notice until about 5:00 o'clock on Wednesday afternoon, the previous Wednesday is when it came in. And I think some of you at least know, I'm a retired judge and work very little, just simply in the mornings. I also should note that I look around the room, and I think I've tried cases involving Mr. Kavanaugh, Mr. Boyle, Mr. Morgan, and, but probably the most important, no, not in Chairman Borgeson, but probably the most important was Deputy Raffey, I think, his grandmother was my high school English teacher. So I hope I don't, I do her justice. Mr. Weber owns two parcels of property, and they're, they're showing in these two blocks up there. And they're approximately 45 acres in, in size. And of the, of the northwest one, there are about five acres of improvements on that particular property. So the remainder of his ground is about 40 acres of hilly terrain ground, and he purchased it simply for conservation purposes, to make sure it remained in the natural state. Immediately abutting to the south, this particular parcel is owned by Duda Farms, and that also is approximately 40 acres in size. Actually, it was, I think the parcel showed to be in the assessor's office seven or eight years ago, to be 36 plus or minus acres, and now it's 39 plus or minus. So approximately the same in size, and I don't believe anybody disputes that they're of similar characteristics, not only size, but similar characteristics. We were here last year, as I indicated, and the board denied our application, and so I'll try not to rehash it, because you've all got better memories than I do, I'm sure. But the, but the point is, and I think it shows simply on your agenda, I wasn't certain whether if we appealed the denial of a green belt, whether it came to the board under its general agenda, or whether it came to the board under the Board of Equalization. But in fact, it is here under the Board of Equalization, and that's appropriate, because we, we feel that Mr. Weber's not been treated fairly by virtue of a classification problem. And, and I will say that from last year's decision, we've appealed that to the Turk, that's pending. There's discovery that's in process and so forth. And I think it really is a case of first impression that ultimately may very well get to the Supreme Court. Now, I can indicate for the Supreme Court, Mr. Kraft had a question on the Supreme Court decision, and I felt like saying, well, one of the old chief justices used to tell me that the Supreme Court is right because it's final. It's not final because it's right. And so some of those issues have to be revisited from time to time. I'm not suggesting that the bid is one of them, but, but the equalization may very well be. So I took Mr. Weber's case because I looked at his valuation first, and the valuation had been up last year. And the board did adjust it some, I don't think enough, but that's neither here nor there. But what really concerned me was the fact that although he held a piece of property that was similar in size and characteristics to the Duda property, for some reason, the county assessor chose to assess it differently, and classify it differently, I mean. And they classified Duda's property as greenbelt or agricultural, and, and of course, Weber had not ever applied for greenbelt. And I know Commissioner Tusha made that point last year, that he hadn't, and quite frankly, it never made me aware of it, or, or we would have applied. And I told the board last year, and I'll tell you again, as I told Mr. Weber, I'm not certain that either of these properties are greenbelt, but, but to equalize the properties out, Mr. Weber had to apply for greenbelt, and the assessor denied it. Now, I don't dispute, I don't dispute that state law requires the assessor to consider adjacent farmland, wasteland. I don't dispute that they have to consider CRP programs. But the point that, that I would make is this, firstly, is this particular parcel is a separate parcel from the rest of Duda Farms, which lay to the east of North River Road. It's separated by North River Road, it's separated by... It's separated by an NRD bike trail. It's separated by a gas line easement. There's approximately, I think, little 100 feet or less of the Duda property that actually abuts the west side of North River Road. There are no machinery crossings or cattle crossings or anything of that nature. And the information that we have is there's never been any crops on this Duda property or this particular parcel for over 50 years. Whether that's right or wrong, I don't know. That's the information that we have. So I believe that if the assessor comes up and indicates that this is adjacent or wasteland, it simply doesn't, it doesn't fall within that kind of a definition. And I think last year, Mr. Goodwill principally relied on the fact that there's 7.2 acres of this 40-acre parcel of Duda's that is CRP. And under state law, the assessor has to consider CRP land as agricultural or horticultural. But that doesn't mean the whole 40-acre tract is, and as a matter of fact, the state law says that the parcel must have a primary use of agricultural or horticultural. And so from last year, I've gone back in and I've looked at, how did this CRP come into existence if there was never a crop there? And there's some things with that that I'll indicate to the board in a little bit. But having said that, what we do know is that for 10 years, Duda Farms has paid $540 a year for CRP program for seven acres. It's now paid, I think, $1,085. You know, we know that. And when I say I know that, that comes from the information that we got through the assessor's office. You know, but I can't get anything else. Oddly enough, from last year's decision, I thought, well, I want to explore this CRP designation. And so I think, I thought that all that information would be covered under the Freedom of Information Act, so I asked a farm service agency and Blair to provide it for me, and they refused. I asked, went ahead and appealed it to the state, and they refused. I appealed it to the regional office, they refused. I appealed it to the national office in Philadelphia, and they refused. And at the present time, that issue, which is a freedom of information thing, is presently under a mediation panel at the government. But I wanted to find out what crops were grown on and so forth, to find out this CRP designation and see if in fact this is really agricultural land. And I don't believe it is, but I, and I don't like to, and I don't mean to imply any wrongdoing. This is from 15, 17 years ago, when the application was made for CRP. What I would like, and then I won't take up much more of your time, what I did find also since last year is I found the original Duda application to place the land in green belt. And so what I want to indicate to you, or at least show you that, if I can, you'll see, it doesn't show the top, well, let me show the top part, to show you that in fact it's a, it's a single tract of land, acres devoted to agriculture or horticulture, says 36.28. And as I indicated, that was adjusted later to 39. But the use, the intensive use area, trees, 36.28 acres of trees, land enrolled in a state and federal program, a conservation reserve, 7.2 acres. What was the wasteland areas claimed? None. You know, so we've got 32 acres roughly, but there's nothing on it. Now, I do not understand how the assessor gets to having a primary use of 40 acres, being agricultural, when there's only seven acres that's receiving payments from all of us, the federal payments, and nothing else. There's nothing else growing on it but trees. And I suppose that I could have Mr. Weber cut down some trees and sell $1,000 worth of firewood, but quite frankly, that's just, that's gamesmanship, and I'm not going to do that, and he's not going to do that. I think the fair, what, the fair thing to do, and I told you last year, is simply designate Weavers as green belt, just like you've designated Duda's, or the assessor's designated Duda's in the past. And I can also indicate to you that I've had my associate research this whole area up there, and this is between Chongaska Road and North River Road and North Apanka Road. And this green belt designation really stands out like a sore thumb. You know, there aren't other properties up there, maybe one or two, you know, that have green belt, but none of the others. And so it's not just Mr. Weber that's really being treated unfairly. There are others up there, but obviously, I don't represent them. I won't take up any more of your time. Like I said, you probably remember it from last year better than I do, although I have done some work with it. I'd certainly encourage you to ask him, Mr. Goodwill, he comes up here and is going to tell you about all this 7.2 acres in CRP and why that's going to be agricultural. I'd suggest you ask him if there's two acres in CRP that's agriculture, you know, something of that nature. With that, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Yes, Commissioner Boyle?
Judge Reagan, what would be your definition, and if you would, your opinion of what the purpose is of green belt designation?
Well, the purpose of a green belt designation is to protect, is to protect those people, the farmers really, that are close to metropolitan areas, and the value of their land is affected so much by the infringement, or if you will, whether it's commercial, residential, whatever, the value of the land's gone up so high that they couldn't possibly afford to pay taxes on it and farm it. And so our constitution provides that the assessor can classify it differently. I can give you an example of that, Commissioner Boyle, real quick. When I got off the bench, I had a sort of a shirt-tailed relative by marriage come to me and was selling 80 acres of property in Sarpy County, and wanted to know if I'd handle a trade where he was going to buy some Iowa ground, which I did. Well, he ended up with a price of $35,000 an acre. Well, you can't farm, you can't farm 80 acres and, you know, and pay taxes on it at $35,000. So that was green belt, and properly so.
Well, and that's really, I guess, my question, because I see green belt as, say, I guess, as you head out Dodge Street, and I shouldn't be naming names, but I will, the Leo Daley home is there on a hill next to a hotel, and across the street on east of 96th and Dodge is a lot of commercial development and so forth, hay needle, and everybody's there. So it seems to me that the Daley family could ask for green belt. Could they or could they not? I mean, is that...
I don't know. Well, anybody can ask for it. Anybody can ask for green belt.
Whether you'd get it.
Whether you get it or not, I guess the, I don't know how long they've had the property.
Oh, probably 50 years, but maybe my impression is wrong, but I thought that it was, it is to protect property owners whose values are affected highly because it's, it has become, their property has become potentially commercial property or of a much higher use than what it is. And so, I mean, I'm looking at this, and I don't see, what's around here? I don't see any West Road Shopping Center or anything nearby. And what's, why is green belt? Am I got the, am I, have a wrong definition or understanding of green belt? What's the threat to, you know, threat to that property? It seems to me that that value of that property has gone up because the value of agricultural land has gone up, not because of the potential of having a shopping center and a movie theater complex built next door to it. Am I missing the boat?
Well, no, I don't think you're missing the boat, and I don't think I disagree, although you've got to keep in mind that green belt is specifically only for agricultural land. So whether people have property that they use for residential or whatever, I think this area up there has been affected somewhat, not only by the increase in the value of land, but also there are some acreages up there, very nice homes that people have built. And as a matter of fact, Mr. Weber's put on an addition to his house, which the assessor was able to up the value, and we didn't dispute that, you know. So there's some very nice homes up there, but the value has been affected, without doubt, simply by the value of farmland or land, and also to some degree by people that moved up there. Chip Davis has a, has a place up there, someplace, I'm not sure where, but, you know, he's also somebody that I've tried a case with, so.
Okay, so it's the threat of people building homes, big estates or 10-acre, 20-acre homes, that's the threat? Is that right?
Well, that's, I think that's affected the value, yes.
All right, that helps. Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
Judge, you stated that the owner of these parcels purchased the property for conversation, conservation.
Conservation.
I'm sorry. Conservation.
They just wanted to talk about it.
Yeah. Purposes. How do you prove that?
How do I, how do I prove that?
Yeah.
Well, I, let me put it this way, and I don't want to, I don't want to leave anybody with the impression that we're going to put a conservation easement on these properties. That's a different, completely different ballgame. And maybe I didn't use the phrase rightly, you know, but Mr. Weber is an individual that simply loves the natural setting of forests. And he bought the first piece of property in 1999, about 20 acres, you know, and he and his wife moved up there. And I will tell you that they're, they're not permanent residents of the state, you know, they have a place in Texas that they go to, and so, but they love the woods, and turkeys come up and, you know, they feed them and so forth. And then they, so they decided when this next piece of ground came up, and the neighbor couldn't sell the whole piece, they just bought extra ground. And maybe that doesn't answer your question, Mr. Kraft, I don't know, but...
Okay. That was, that's fine. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
So Judge, what is it you would like us to do today?
I would like for you to grant green belt on these two pieces of property. And then I, then it leaves, it leaves it up to me to go back to the county attorney's office and the assessor's office, you know, it may resolve the things on appeal, too. And I would encourage, as a matter of fact, the State Department of Revenue has a regulation or a rule or whatever out that says that assessors are supposed to continuously evaluate property that has been granted green belt, to ensure that they still have the qualifications of it. So I'm under no illusions that the assessor at some point in time can go back and look at this and say, no, I don't think Weavers get green belt, but I don't think Duda Farms does either.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions or comments? Thank you, Judge. Mr. Goodwill?
Mike Goodwill, Douglas County Assessor's Office. Good morning, Commissioners. Couple of things about these parcels. Judge Reagan's right, we were here before last year. And one of the things that hasn't changed is it does not appear that the two Weber parcels are being used for agricultural purposes any more than they were last year. I also think he's right that this may turn into a case of first impression, because what essentially Mr. Weber is asking you to do is to say, even though we don't qualify for this particular status, we think it should be granted to us because there's another parcel that we don't think should have that status either. And near as I can tell, the Supreme Court has not had to rule on that kind of an issue in this context. What we do know is that as recently as a year or so ago, the Supreme Court has said you cannot equalize between non-agricultural land and agricultural land. That there, the constitution has set up a classification for agricultural land that has to be valued and equalized separately from other kinds of land. With respect to these parcels, the Weber parcels do not, do not qualify on their own. As far as the small, smaller of the two Duda parcels, statutorily, yes, CRP does qualify as agricultural land. So you do have some, some statutorily defined agricultural use. The rest of that small parcel, I think, can be characterized as wasteland, which is defined as basically land that is uneconomical to, to do agricultural work on. It certainly is, it certainly adjoins the CRP parcel. And additionally, wasteland is also, can be, can also be considered agricultural land when it's adjacent to and in common ownership with land that is agricultural land. Adjacent is kind of a funny term. It is not defined either in the statutes that govern green belt or the regulations that the State Department of Revenue has with them, but there are some Supreme Court cases, including the case of Freeman versus City of Neely, where the court adopted this language, the word adjacent, in the popular sense thus used, obviously means something in addition to or different from abutting. In constructing or construing the word adjacent, the word is at least somewhat indefinite, or narrowly it means to lie near, close, or contiguous, from Webster. Even in its strictest sense, it means no more than lying near, close, or contiguous, but not actually touching. What I would like you to look at is the larger context. Not only do we have some acres of CRP ground in the smaller Duda parcel, but across the road, this larger parcel, is the Duda Farms parcel. And there's no question that that is a working farm of about 800 or 900 acres. What I would simply leave you with is, under this definition of adjacent, this smaller parcel clearly is near to, lying near an active farm, and it's under common ownership with that farm. So I guess what I would say is, we believe that the smaller parcel still qualifies, and the Weber parcels do not. And we would ask that you deny the protest here today.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Mike, would a solution be for the Weaver family to apply for CRP?
Well, I don't know, I don't know what process the folks that administer CRP, I don't know what they would necessarily look at in reviewing that kind of application. I have a rough understanding that perhaps at one time, the property might have been used for an active agricultural pursuit, and now is not going to be. But don't hold me to that, I don't work for the Department of Agriculture. I don't know how they would fare if they did that.
I was just trying to get a free opinion for Judge Reagan. Let me ask you a question. Let me ask you a question. When you look at that map, that top part, which has, I believe, has the Weaver property, is 13506 North River Drive, of course, is adjacent to the, the one that's also owned by Weavers, 0233940004. But more importantly, isn't the 13506 North River Drive adjacent to the Duda Farm?
The difference would be, Commissioner, the requirement to get ag treatment for your wasteland is that the wasteland must be adjacent to, lying in, adjacent to, and in common ownership with the active farm. So if Mr. Weber wants to make Commissioner Duda an offer he can't refuse for Duda Farm, he might qualify under that basis if he were operating and owning Duda Farm.
Or, you know, five acres across the, whatever that is, North River Drive? I mean, that won't happen, but if nothing else, Commissioner Duda has a good map of his farm. Which he didn't find amusing, sorry.
No other questions or comments? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for being here today. The question before us, is there a motion to deny the green belt for 13506 North River Drive for the two parcels?
I'll second it. And I have, you know, mixed emotions about it, but I think it, it looks to me like it's pretty clear that it does, that we have to, we have to do that. So I'll second that motion.
Okay. Please vote. And does that, I'm sorry, does that include adjournment?
Oh, yeah, I thought I said... Oh yeah, I thought I said that.
Okay, please vote. Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Reagan.
We'll go into the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Item 1A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meetings held Monday, August 18th, and Tuesday, August 19th. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, September 2nd, 2014. Motion to approve A and B.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Next is the consent agenda. There are seven items, A through G, with one note that on G1, that resolution is being removed and will be placed back on our September 9th.
Which one's this?
G1. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the consent? Please vote. Next is the recognition and proclamation. We did this resolution last year declaring September 2014 as the Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. We will, I thank Marcos for preparing the resolution, and then we'll send this on to the organizations that requested us to recognize this. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Good afternoon, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Greg Whitehead, I'm a lifelong Omahaan, born, raised, and educated here. Thank you for giving me a few moments to talk to you, bring some attention to you about the way our vehicle property taxes are assessed in Douglas County and the rest of Nebraska. Essentially, it's not equitable, and I think that the refund on the tax refund issue is addressed and may need to be readdressed or clarified in Nebraska statute 6395. Contrary to what most people do, I recently had a transaction where I transferred a vehicle and actually tried to track the credit for the tax paid back to my refund. Unfortunately, what I found is that the Douglas County Treasurer's Office, and presumably all Nebraska County Treasurers, charged both the buyer and the seller for taxes in the month the vehicle changes hands, effectively collecting double tax for that month. My guess is that the general public, me included, was not aware of this practice. No matter when during the month a vehicle is purchased, the tax is collected from the beginning of the month of purchase. Likewise, when a vehicle is sold or transferred, again, no matter when during the month the transaction takes place, both the seller and the buyer are charged for that month. It would be the month of disposition for the seller and the month of acquisition for the buyer. On top of that, the county in effect admits to this inequity by prorating the seller's tax refund differently when the credit is transferred to another vehicle or refunded. If it's transferred to another vehicle, the buyer is not charged for the tax in the month of disposition, because the Treasurer's Office acknowledges that the seller is paying a full-month acquisition on the new replacement vehicle, again, they charge from the first of the month. But if it is just refunded, the buyer is charged for the month of disposition. This makes no sense, and I think the public would be irritated at this practice that it's been allowed to go on. How do you fix it? Easily. Contrary to what the Douglas County Treasurer's Office will tell you, we do not need to hire more personnel or purchase expensive exacting tax apportionment systems. We can simply stop charging the seller personal property tax for the month of disposition because it's already being collected for that month from the buyer. The only way the government would not collect more than their fair share in this very rare circumstance is if a taxpayer were to purchase a car on the first day of the month, and then in a subsequent year sell or transfer the car on the very last day of that same month, effectively causing the collection of 12 months of taxes for 13 months of usage. This rare situation accepted, because of collecting from the first month on the month of purchase, the government will still likely collect more of its prorated share even if not charging the seller in the month of disposition. As our representatives on the Douglas County Commission, I would ask that all of you acknowledge this inequity, and support the simple change suggested with your contacts and local government, if such a change actually needs to be made through the Nebraska Legislature during the next session. I have reviewed with both candidates in my district, which is Pete Persha's district, and Robert Hillkeman and Stacy Ryan, I believe, understand the issue. And again, as a taxpayer, I'm kind of irritated that this has hadn't been going on for that length of time. Questions, and thank you collectively for your time this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I really appreciate you bringing that forward, I had no idea, but I'm curious if I understand the full impact. If I were to buy a car and license it two days before, let's say, April 25th, do I pay taxes for the entire month of April?
You do.
You do. Okay, and then if it was a used car, the seller is still paying the entire month of April as well?
If you bought the car April 25th, you would pay taxes for the month of April.
Right.
The seller, when he would get his tax refund, if he bought the car originally in June or something, he would also be charged for the month of April.
That's amazing.
Commissioner Morgan?
Greg and I have had probably, I don't know, half a dozen conversations, and I did meet with Tim, and I think he can maybe make a few comments. I think you make an excellent point.
Yeah.
So if you were to purchase my car on the 29th of the month, you're going to pay for the whole month.
Right.
I also paid for that whole month. Now, with that said, we'd need to have the statute changed, and I've talked about the idea of possibly having our legislative program put this into the agenda when we meet with them. But I'd also like to be respectful of Tim, to talk about this and the Treasurer's view on that matter. First, we thought about the prorating, which became kind of an issue, as you stated, also.
As Tim's coming down, can I interject just a question real quick?
Sure.
Your solution was to just not have the seller pay, because then that would take away, or the...
The seller, right.
The seller.
Yeah.
Because that would take away...
Because the buyer is already paying for that month of disposition. So in other words, if the car is sold in April, the buyer is paying for the entire month of April, so we shouldn't charge the seller for that month, too.
So I'd get, if he bought wherever he went, he must have gone to get the money to buy my car, that'd be great. So what happens is, I would not have to pay that month. He buys it on the 29th, even though I got the use, he's going to pay the whole month, I get the full refund for the month, isn't that what you...
No.
No.
That's incorrect.
Right.
Okay, go ahead.
When you purchase a vehicle, you're paying it no matter when during the month, you could purchase it December 2nd, or December 26th, then you're going to pay the entire month of December when you purchase the vehicle. When you sell the vehicle, then if you sold it December 31st, the buyer's tags will show 12, they'll pay from December 1st on.
Right.
And you, as the seller, will also get charged in your refund for the month of December.
Right, but if you change the law, then the seller won't pay for December.
That's exactly right.
That's what I meant.
Because the buyer is already paying for it.
That's what I meant.
Correct.
If we got, were able to get the law changed...
Correct.
And I sold it to my, then I would not be paying for April or whatever month I sold it in, even though I sold it on the 29th.
Correct.
Okay.
So there's no personnel costs here, and there's no apportionment systems that the Douglas County Treasurer's Office is going to tell you they're going to need.
And just so the board members know, I did take the time to meet with the Treasurer's Office about this issue in our conference room probably three or four weeks ago, talking about this matter. So it's good that you're here to bring it up again and let them speak publicly.
But just a minute, because there's one more step that I want to make sure I understand, that when, if we go with his solution, which I think is a good solution, by not charging the seller for that month, because right now, if you charge the seller, the Treasurer's Office refunds them by prorating when the car was sold, correct? Or the buyer, whichever one?
They don't, basically, if you sold the car on December 2nd, both the buyer and the seller will pay for the month of December.
Right.
So if you had six months in a refund coming as the seller, you'd actually get five, because they're going to charge you for that month.
Oh, they still charge you?
Right.
They don't prorate it, so you're...
No.
So they are collecting twice.
Because they don't have the ability to prorate on an exacting basis, they have to do, I mean, again, we don't want to change our whole, our sticker system and licensing system.
Right.
So the easiest way to handle this, since they're already collecting from the buyer from the first of the month of that month of disposition, then they shouldn't charge the seller.
Okay.
So the seller should actually get their full credit. So if, in fact, they use the car for six months, they should get their credit for six months, not be in charge for the month of disposition.
Okay, got you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Tim.
Tim Kavanaugh, Chief Deputy Treasurer.
Good morning.
Thank you. We did have extensive conversation about this, and essentially, he's correct. If you own a vehicle for any day of a month, you pay taxes for that month. And if you purchase a vehicle, if you own it one day during that month, you pay taxes for that month. One thing to keep in mind when you do buy a vehicle, you get a sticker for that month. That expires the same month, a year from then, so essentially 13 months, not 12. You'll have it for use for, let's say you buy it in January, and through December is 12 months, well, you still have the month of January use of that vehicle, which would be 13 months. Then you get another sticker. So you do get one free month in there, in this process. I don't know if that means much in the context of this argument or not, but essentially, he is correct, that if you own a vehicle for any portion of any month, you pay taxes for that month. Now, if you transfer ownership to a new car, you, as the taxpayer, have already paid that. So as a person, you don't have to pay that again. But if it's a different buyer, then you do, if that makes sense.
Commissioner Morgan?
No, I'm good.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, this is very eye-opening. Why don't, why is the buyer penalized? Why isn't the, why isn't the month of December, if it's December 9th, why doesn't the seller pay up to December 9th? And why does the buyer pay from December 9th on? Why are you, you know, why are you doing this?
Well...
And I don't understand why only the buyer gets the privilege of paying for a month that he didn't own, he or she didn't own the car. And I understand that, you know, next year thing, what if you sell it and, you know, you've only owned the car for 10 months and you sell it? You'd lose it, don't you?
Well, of course, we operate under Nebraska statute.
Well, I understand that.
And I can't really speak to the reasoning behind the legislation in the first place, but we have had multiple conversations with the Department of Motor Vehicles in Lincoln, and they do support what we've been doing is correct. So we are doing it the right way.
Well, yeah, we follow the law.
Rationalization, I don't know, whatever their reason, it's been that way for a long time.
Sure, it's the way we've always done it. Let me ask you, and I'm not suggesting that you're the culprit, I think the state needs to get its act together, which is nothing new.
Yeah, this is a legislative issue.
Right. So I think they need to, we need to talk to somebody about this, and I'm for not anybody getting stuck, you know, the buyer, in my estimation, who buys a car on December 22nd, shouldn't pay for the entire month of December. I don't care about that free month, which is free from the government, is just a concept that doesn't register with me. But that last month of December, or whatever, I just don't see it. I just, I don't get that at all. I don't agree with it. I get it, but I don't agree with it. So I just think it's not fair to have the buyer paying for the entire month when he or she didn't have the use of the vehicle for that month.
Well, it's okay.
Commissioner Morgan?
But see, then if you started to do it that way, then the seller, who sold it on the 2nd of the month, let's just say, he would then be paying for that full month.
I'm saying it's...
And the buyer would get it free.
I'm saying it's prorated.
But see, then that becomes the issue that you mentioned about the prorating out becomes a real, I mean, our people, we're going to need more staff. I think we talked about that, Tim. Don't let me say anything that's incorrect, please.
Well, what do we register, 400,000 vehicles a year?
Well, what's Oracle doing? What do we pay Oracle a year? $65 billion, or what?
Do you want to...
Plug in something into Oracle, good grief. We pay a fortune to those people.
That's the vehicle highlight.
Greg, do you want to say something? Do it.
I think the issue is...
Come to the microphone, please. Just reiterate your name.
I think the issue, like I said, is not an expensive apportionment system or personnel. It's simply because, Commissioner Boyle, they can't prorate to the exact day like you're suggesting. I'm a CPA by training, and to try to have the government buy a system to do that would be too expensive. It's almost akin to buying a burglar system that where it's absolutely for your house that nobody can break into. It's just too expensive. There's always going to be a risk. Here, if they do something where it's long anyway, where in this case, they charge the seller and the buyer for the same month. So if I sell a car, I'm being charged for the month, I sell it no matter when during the month I sell it, and the buyer is being charged from the beginning of that month because of the extra month that Mr. Kavanaugh indicated. So the easy way to do this without costing a lot of money is simply don't charge the seller in the month of disposition. And as a result of that, the government's still going to collect a little bit long because they can't apportion exactly like you suggested, but it at least makes the taxpayer somewhat whole. And in these times right now, we pay all of you to represent us to make sure that these kind of inequities don't exist.
So the solution you're suggesting is that the buyer of that car would pay the tax for that month no matter when they bought it, the seller would not pay any tax during that month that he sold it, even if he sold it on the last day of the month?
Correct. Because the buyer's paying for the month that he...
The buyer's going to pay it. But as Tim said, he's getting the 13 months.
If you keep the car.
Yeah, if you keep the car. So, you know, I think it's a matter where if we decided to go to the legislature as part of our program, then that's what we would do. And Tim, I guess, I'm not sure where the Treasurer's Office stands, but at some point we want to hear from you and some of the downside of this issue, and if you say, "I want to say something now," that's great. But if you say, "Like to talk to Mr. Ewing some more about this and come back to the board," if not, then we would probably say to, you know, Kelly, hey, we'd like to look at this legislation, but I'd like to have for sure the Treasurer's Office and be respectful of the view and cost to the county.
Thank you.
Well, I think...
Because there is an inequity.
But Tim, can, there really isn't a downside, other than we're reaping the benefits of an additional payment from the taxpayer on the same vehicle.
Well, there would be some programming issues and calculations and so forth that would have a cost. I don't know what that would be right now, but...
But why would it, why would there be if, I mean, we would delete, just say, if we used the solution presented, we would just not charge one versus both?
Well, that would be easier. Certainly, going from the top plan of prorating by the day, down to eliminating the month altogether would certainly be easier to program for.
Right, okay, okay. And so the downside to that, it would be an upside for the taxpayer, because then they're not being charged twice, or taxpayers. Then the downside would be, there's an additional piece of revenue that would be lost.
Correct.
But again, it's double taxation on the same vehicle that really does need to be corrected. Okay, all right.
So that we kind of bring it to where we're going, would it be fair, Tim, to maybe have you meet with three of us at some point with Mr. Ewing about it sometime in the next month or sometime later in September? And we could talk about it a little bit?
Certainly.
And get the pros and cons? And then you may want to have the number so we can call you to inform you about it, Greg? If that's fair? And then maybe it can be, I'm glad to participate in that. If Mike Boyle wants to participate, that'd be great.
And we'll talk to Lincoln a little bit, too, about what that might entail.
That'd be great.
Because we use their program for this, the Vehicle Tiling and Registration Program, that's not ours.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I'd rather be, rather have it be in this forum, so that everybody can hear it all at once, and we can have the public hear it as well. I think that's my preference, I don't see why it needs to be not open to the, that's my...
Great.
The other deal is that, what's the difference between how I'm treated when I trade a car in? I mean, I get a refund of some sort on my property taxes, on the vehicle taxes, don't I? When I, if I trade in and whatever it is, what's that refund? When I, if I trade in and whatever it is, what, what's that refund all about?
On a car, on a house, you mean?
No, I'm excuse, on a car.
I'm not sure what your question-
Well, okay, let's say, just, I'll tell you what I did. I, I bought a, I already did one of the most screwed up auto transactions. I hate to admit it, particularly to the CPA in the audience. But I sold a car for cash. I didn't own any money on it, and I sold it. And then I turned around and used that for a down payment on a, on a car that was a hybrid, and it was too small for me, and it killed my back. So, I, it was brand new, the first brand new car I ever bought. So, then I turned around and bought the CRV. I'm driving the Honda, which is up higher and feels much better to drive. Well, the whole process, I mean, I just think I blew that twelve grand. First of all, it wasn't considered as a trade-in, so it didn't drive down the sales tax I had to pay, which was mistake number one. Then, I mean, this whole thing with this car that I bought, this Honda Civic Hybrid, that was just kind of disappeared in the mist, and that was a, I don't know, twenty-five-thousand-dollar deal. I didn't want to look at the paperwork on it. But at the end of the day, the bottom line was that I had a, a refund on some of the licensing property tax, apparently, on that Honda Hybrid when I bought the Honda CRV. Well, if you can do that, why can't you do that to this kind of a transaction?
Uh, don't know why not, just because the law doesn't allow for it.
Well, I mean, if you can do it on, where I got my money back, I was the buyer and the seller in this case, I guess.
Can you speak to this? I'm not quite sure.
I'm not quite sure what you're asking.
Well, why don't you step over and give your name?
Karine Burnett, Manager of Motor Vehicle. Are you asking-
You need to really speak up to and answer the mic.
Are you asking about a credit versus a refund?
A, a credit, I, I don't know.
So, so, there is a difference, and that's what we have been saying.
Well, here's what I'm saying.
When I, when I take a vehicle and I sell a vehicle-
Right.
And I come into the Treasurer's Office, and I'm going to license a new vehicle, I use those plates from the old vehicle-
Right.
-to trade it in on the new vehicle.
Right.
Okay?
Uh-huh.
You get a month of credit, and the reason you get a month of credit is because we are charging-
I get a month, a month's credit?
The, the month you are losing on the refund, if you do a straight refund, so you sell a car, you don't have anything you're going to license, okay? The issue is, when you do that straight refund, you are losing a month. When you credit a vehicle, so you, you're going to license a new car, you actually get a month's of credit, an extra month, okay?
Transferring the plates.
And the reason, transferring the plates, okay, from the car you sold to a new car. And the reason being is on the new car, you are being charged, so they're giving you credit from the old car.
And what credit do I get? Just that one little bit of a month?
Just that one month, yes. Yes.
Well, you guys are, you should-
Let me mention something.
Commissioner Morgan?
If you licensed a car right now for the next year, okay?
Yes.
Next month, you trade that car in to a dealer, go to the Treasurer's Office, you're going to have eleven months possibly of credit from what you paid on the new car. It's more expensive, then you're going to have a nice credit, plus you'll still pay some. Would I be accurate in what I just said?
Yes, sir.
Yeah?
Yes, sir.
Well-
So, you get the full months, in other words?
I'd like, I'd really like to get this fixed as reasonably as possible, and I, I don't think it's going to go far enough, but-
Commissioner Boyle, and as to your question, if, if they treat a refund and a credit differently. So, in essence, what I told you is, the seller, if you do a, a credit where it's applied to another vehicle-
Uh-huh.
Because they charge on the front end for your plates, as he mentioned, then that's calculated different than the refund. To me, it shouldn't matter. If we change it like I suggested, why does it matter to the government whether I bought a new car or I got my credit? I used the roads for the same period of time. So, that ought to be done the same way. So, and what he tried to explain to you is that basically, you, you get an extra month, you get that month back if you roll it to another vehicle, where if you're just given a cash credit and they write you a check, then you don't.
Then you don't.
Okay.
That's the secondary problem with the way that this taxing system's set up.
I have one other question I'd like to ask the Treasurer's Office. Is there, does the city give any credit when you, when you purchase a different vehicle for the wheel tax, or do you get socked again for that?
The, the, the wheel tax is handled, the wheel tax is handled the same way as your property tax and everything else. There's a credit to it.
There is a credit?
It's prorated.
Okay, I didn't realize that. Okay. Okay, well, thanks. I think this is terrific. Thanks for bringing this up.
So, we'll continue to work on this. We're, we're going to pass this on to Marcos for a legislative initiative, and-
Well, maybe we should get it from Tim.
Well, Marcos for us. I mean, he'll work with Tim in the Treasurer's Office to bring it as a legislative initiative for the Board. Okay? Thank you. Next is a presentation extending research to practice child, family, and community development local initiatives. This was from the Douglas County Cooperative Extension and brought by Commissioner Chris Rogers. Do you want to introduce it?
Um, I'll let them pass out. I think they have some copies of the report if you all want to pass it out. I'm going to introduce Dr. Vancico, who's the Director of Extension, and then let her go from there.
Hi.
Would you give one, please?
I brought this up to the Board because I put myself in the appointment to the Extension Board to kind of get a better understanding of what Extension did based on a conference I spoke at, at NACO. And at that conference, I learned some specifics about the difference between some rural extensions and urban extensions. And actually, with the Health Department's CHIP program, I stumbled upon this other aspect of Extension that I didn't know, when Extension did some research for our Health Department in respects to early childhood and the gaps in services to prevent emotional distress in early childhood. Actually, Extension did this study for HHS, and we're going to use it in our Community Health Improvement Plan to try to get at the stresses of mental health and public health. So, I thought it would be good just to put this study in the hands of the Board because it focuses on Douglas County, Lancaster County, and Lincoln County, and, one, give the Board another idea of what Extension is dealing in. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Vancico.
So, I've always talked about oftentimes Extension being research-based, unbiased information. I think sometimes those words can get lost, and so the research-based component is that there's research from campus, and our job is to bring that to the county. And the unbiased piece is the fact that there's no product being sold, so there's nothing to sell other than research-based information. And so, when you do a Google search, you always want to look for a dot edu to make sure that you're getting some unbiased, research-based information. I could talk all day about what Extension does, and I think sometimes that gives people a glazed overlook because there's a lot of stuff going on. So, really, what I thought a great idea would be, since this county assessment was going on in Tri-County, so actually Douglas, Lancaster, and Lincoln County, I thought it was really pertinent to also have Dr. Tanya Durden come and talk about the specific research on community needs assessments for Douglas County so that it provides you information around what are the gaps in terms of, we look at cradle to career in terms of growing youth, and she has some great information from zero to five, what are the gaps in Douglas County? So, I'll let her present her findings from that research.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Looking at the time. Yes, good morning. In front of you is actually the condensed report, so it's just representing the Douglas County data that we collected. We do have copies of the full report that includes West Central as well as Lancaster County. As mentioned, we had a contract and actually a partnership with the Division of Public Health through the Department of Health and Human Services in Nebraska. And the focus of this work, of this research, particularly in Douglas County, was locally to guide communities and assist them in process of community mapping and planning to identify their strengths and gaps in early childhood mental health services and social-emotional development. From a statewide perspective, the reason why the Department of Health and Human Services was interested in their work, this work, is that they wanted to establish a statewide priority and project area to really aggregate the data that we were collecting from these three different counties in order to prioritize early childhood mental health services and support for families and communities. So, the early childhood systems of care tool that we administered in Douglas County had four specific areas that we were assessing. Those areas include health, family resource, early childhood mental health services, and also school age. And it was a Likert scale that we administered, and the scale included two different areas. First, the degree to which the services were actually available in the community and the priority. So, in 2011, Douglas County actually already conducted the Early Childhood Systems of Care Assessment Tool, but it was very specific to direct care providers or to practitioners in the field who were servicing families. And so, our data collection approach was a little bit different since Douglas County had already implemented the tool to some of the providers across the community. So, we had a two-tier approach. First, we connected to the Early Childhood Mental Health Coalition, which is a consortium of agencies representing public health, early childhood mental health, therapists, family service organizations, social services, to meet with this group and conduct a focus group to first remind them of the 2011 priorities that had already been set forth in Douglas County, and also to see what are some of the initiatives that had already been introduced and implemented in the community since 2011, and to see if there's any other new priorities that we should be focusing on. The second tier of our data collection is that we were really interested because the focus of the original tool was just for service providers. So, we were really interested in getting the perception of the families. We wanted to see if there was a relationship between what the service provider said, where the gaps in services and the needs in the communities, and what the families actually said. So, we created a companion tool, and we did a small pilot in Douglas County to, for parents to get their feedback, families' their feedback of the priority areas, also the gaps. So, what you see in front of you are the results of both the parent survey as well as the service providers' focus group. And what we found was there were two common areas of needs and services that were both similar for the service practitioners as well as the families. And the two primary areas is resources for respite care, so that was identified as having a huge gap in knowledge or access within the community, and also a high need. Also, the second was parent education for high-quality educational services, whether it's for infants, for preschoolers, or for school age. Other areas that were also priority areas in Douglas County includes resources for coping with traumatic events during childhood and the availability of parent-child therapy during infancy, preschool, and primary years. So, as representative in our, of our work in Extension, this represents the research portion. And so, our next step, or the next phase of our work is the actual outreach and the educational research, the educational extension of this work. And so, we're planning within the next month or so to connect, again, with the consortium as well as public health practitioners in order to address particularly the areas of respite and high-quality education. So, we're beginning our outreach phase of using these findings. Another part of our extension or outreach for Phase Two is also to present the findings to entities such as this Board as well as other community agencies who have very similar work that they're invested in concerning social-emotional development of children and families in Douglas County.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I, um, did you actually work within it? You're talking about next phase after all this other stuff you've done. The next phase is to actually do something? You've just been looking at the problem, trying to figure out what's going on, and then now you're going to start doing something about it? Is that what's happening?
It's a two-tiered approach. First, we were conducting the research. So, we were doing a community needs assessment to measure the strengths and services and the gaps in services. So, we have identified that, those priority areas. So, our next step is exactly what you just mentioned, is to actually do the outreach for families and service providers in these two targeted areas.
Okay, how do you reach the families?
Well, we have multiple agencies that we work with through Extension as well as the partnering agencies.
No, I mean the families that are, that are not functional. How do you reach them? They're the ones that have their problems.
Can you-
How do you reach the parents who don't give a damn about their kids? What's your plan to do that?
Well, from my experience, and my work is, I'm an early childhood extension specialist.
Your what?
I'm an early childhood extension specialist. So, a big part of my work is working with families and high-needs families. And so, based on my experiences with working with families, there are very few instances where I have encountered families who do not want the best interests of their child. I have experienced families who have challenges in providing quality care for their child, whether it may be financial, mental health issues that they suffer from, and domestic violence situations, which is exactly what the tool actually measures to see, first of all, if you are having challenges with caring for your child, are you accessing the services within the community to help you support the healthy social-emotional development of your family and your child? So, that's a big portion-
The answer's no.
-of this work.
The answer's no. I mean, I'm talking about young girls who think it's a must to have a child when she's thirteen, fourteen, and, you know, the whole lifestyle is different. The mother think that's really great if she's around. I mean, I'm really concerned about that. That is the problem. I don't know what this, you know, fifty, sixty thousand feet view you've got of this, but down on the, down on the pavement, there are families that haven't bonded, there are children that are unloved, they have just been ignored, they probably aren't in school, they're stumbling around, they're out at three o'clock in the morning, read the World Herald, and all these people are getting shot at three and four o'clock in the morning. What, what is that all about? And, you know, are you going to be teaching any sex education to these people?
Well, no.
Are they going to be?
Can I mean-
What is the program? I mean, I don't get it.
No. The, the, the whole study, Mike, was that you, it basically said that, the point you just made is that some of the parents, there's issues going on, and one of the issues is that you framed it as if there was, how do you take care of parents that don't care? I think the study is saying there are parents out there that are put in situations that they, that some, that the agencies that you're talking about, they need to help them, they don't know who they are. And the study says there's a disconnect from that parent that's in need, and how do you find the services? And that disconnect is causing emotional trauma for early pre-K kids that could play itself out to where we're at. And that's what it's saying to some degree. So, basically, it's an early indicator of what needs to be connected.
See, what I'm saying is that parents are, you know, second-generation throwaways. They've been discarded by their, the person who gave them birth. And they're, and they're totally ignored, they have, they're not connected to society, they're sort of underworld, you know, it's just a disaster. And then they're having children, and it's the same stuff. There's no bonding, there's none of this relationship that needs to be taking place. There's nothing, no connection with education. Education just isn't even on the radar. I mean, this is a crisis. And I think, you know, it's great that you're studying all this stuff and everything else, but I'll tell you what, it, you know, you really need to get into, and I don't know how you do it, how you get to a person who's never been kissed or hugged by an adult. I mean, that is a disaster. That sets them on a course of, of not caring about human life, having no respect. It leads to a horrible situation, and I think that, that is the problem.
And that's what they just told-
I don't know how you're going to get to that.
Well, can I give you an example?
Sure.
A very practical example. So, on Thursdays, I partner with the Lutheran Family Services-
Uh-huh.
And I conduct a teen parenting group.
And you conduct what?
A teen parenting group.
Teen parent.
So, I work with teens, yes, very high-risk teens. And so, one of the core areas that we've been focusing on with parent education is exactly what you're mentioning concerning attachment and emotional literacy and how to provide that emotionally healthy environment for their baby. And so, that's a, a very direct service that not only I provide but also across Extension. Now, what this research does then is with my work that I do actually in the field, it tells me, oh, I have to loop back around and see with the very families I work with, whether or not they know they have access to respite services, whether they know they have access to parent therapy services and mental health services as well. And so, this helps to inform further the work that I'm doing with my individual group, which is not uncharacteristic to all extension agents and educators and researchers, and I didn't want to cut you out if there was something.
When you talk to this teenage girl about her baby, do you ever give her contraceptives? Do you ever talk to her about sex education? Do you ever talk to the parent, if the parent's around, about the need to tell her kid that going to bed is not the solution to life? And do you ever talk to her about giving up the baby? Do you ever talk to them about having an abortion? Do you ever talk about real-life things and situations, going to school, getting your GED, getting them a shock treatment, you know, to say, this is not how you should live? And I mean, I would raise my voice a little more if I weren't in this meeting, but this other stuff of, you know, coddling is just ain't working.
It's not.
I think it has to be a shock treatment, and I think you have to get, the extension or somebody has to get active in sex education. We've got to talk about how, these babies are produced by one thing, and you need to talk to the boys, too, and the girls about what a disaster it is. I talk to my granddaughters, and I've got 13 granddaughters. And when I have a chance to talk to them alone, which is frequently, just happens, I tell them, if you want to live a life of poverty, get pregnant. Do that, and you will, you will never get out of where you are. You'll never get above water. Get an education, get yourself situated where you've got a job that, where you make some money, and then, I don't care, have a baby out of wedlock, that's your choice, you're an adult by then, but don't do it when you're 15, because you will never, ever get out of poverty. So, all these programs about, that are circulating the issue, I mean, I'm telling you, sex education is critical, and we're all, and particularly the Catholics in this community are, oh, my God, don't talk about it. You know, we've got to tell them, you know, your standards don't apply to the community. The community needs contraceptives and they need sex education. Sorry.
Go ahead, just go ahead.
And what you just said is not their role, though. I don't disagree with, I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but what they, what they're doing is adding to the body of knowledge.
Yeah.
It basically says, and that's what everything that we're hearing is doing to some degree, basically, what you're saying is something that they didn't go into. Basically, they say that once you're here, that parent that you just described is in a traumatic situation where they can't find assistance, and we need to find them assistance. So, the reason I asked them more so was to just open up the board to additional stuff with extension, but we've been having this discussion about mental health, and this piece that they just put out extends mental health down the pipeline chain to say there could be traumatic effects in the early years because of stuff going on at the home, and I just wanted the board to hear that, body of knowledge on that.
Well, I respectfully say that anyone who doesn't know that there's problems going on and all this sort of stuff, we really don't need another study. We don't need anybody looking.
And there's a lot of people that don't know.
Well, then what you do need to do is cut to the chase and get to the problem. And the problem is everybody, all these kids having babies, because it's the thing to do, and they don't, no one talks to them about sex education bluntly. And no one shows them what happens when you have a baby, when you're 14 and 15 years old, you're never, ever getting out of it.
That's not the core of the issue. If you willingly have a kid and you are, and you don't have the money to find services, this is what the story about. That's what, this is what the study's about. I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, but you took it somewhere that this wasn't a study. The study was, there are people that are willingly having kids, they don't have the income, and because they're in this situation, there are traumatic events going on, they don't know where the resources are, and we're not connecting the dots to giving them resources to handle crisis in their lives.
I'm just saying, let's stop it before it starts.
That's a good point.
I'm talking about prevention rather than treating, you know, a girl 16 with three kids and telling her where to get food stamps is not what I see as any kind of a solution at all.
I agree, and I'm just pointing out to you, that's not what the study.
She needs to be given contraceptives when she's 14 or seven. I don't know what it takes, but they've got to have it early.
So, I might speak to you real quick, and it is outside the research piece of it. I don't want to take a lot of time with it, but I will just say to you that you're right. It's, it takes three generations to break the cycle of that stuff. But at any given time, there's 13 professionals working with one family, and half the time, being in those meetings, they don't know what each other's doing, and they miss the boat half the time. So, here, we're paying these professionals to work with this family, and they're not always acutely aware of really what the family needs. And so, when the research is done to show the gaps and you can educate the community partners, it creates a more efficient way to work with the families. So, I totally agree with you that we miss the boat at times, but sometimes by educating the parent, even the young parent who's having a kid, that might be having a kid, that's just part of breaking the cycle, and it does take three generations to break it. And so, I think we do a disservice to the families and to taxpayer dollars if we're not educating the professionals that are working with them about what are the gaps, what are we missing, why are we duplicating things when we're working with the same families? And there's just so many hands in the pie that oftentimes, they're not communicating well.
I don't disagree with you, but if all of them are trying to figure out how to get food stamps and how to get free rent and do all this other stuff, how to get into Housing Authority, housing and all this free stuff, that's not a problem. I mean, those things will work out.
Right.
What's the problem is, is talking to them about getting pregnant.
Right.
The disaster that occurs when you have children when you're 14, and then you have another one when you're 15, and, you know, then the education you talk about, I understand, I hear you saying, education to that 14-year-old girl with two kids is, where do you get food stamps? No, I'm saying, you need to use contraceptives, and here they are.
I'll tell you this, they probably know more about the welfare system sometimes than we know because they've been raised on it.
Well, they do, so.
So, they know that.
So, that's why I'm saying, why are you, why are you educating them?
So, we don't, so a lot of it is more about, they know how to have a baby. I mean, that's, they got that. But it's more about the emotional pieces, what she's talking about, the emotional trauma that happens, and then how do you address that piece of it?
I'm saying, stop it.
But the study's not about welfare.
Not about welfare, but traumatic events. I'm saying, why wait until they've had a traumatic event and then try to talk to them about how to survive? I'm saying, get to them first and say, don't do this kind of activity because it will lead to a traumatic event.
And the study's not about teen mothers. The study is about, the study's not about teen mothers.
And.
The study's not about teen mothers, it's not about teen parenting.
Right, the, the, yes, the mean age is actually 33 of the participants who took the survey.
How old are they?
33. That's the mean average. And actually, if you look in your report, if you look in your report, there are also indicators, for example, because that's a part of, and I have the full tool as well that I can, you know, provide to you, but a part of the tool and the questions that we ask has a P and an I. So, a P for whether or not this particular service is preventive and an I for intervention. And so, that also may give you further, because that's important to know, you know, other priorities and services that are identified in the community, are they only preventive types of services or only reactive? So, exactly what you just mentioned.
Are you through, Commissioner Boyle?
I sure am.
Commissioner Rogers?
No, I'm done.
No, Commissioner Kraft.
As I've proved today through the conversations we've had, I'm not always the brightest duck in the pool, but I have a problem with acronyms.
Okay.
You have so many acronyms here that have absolutely no meaning, Q R I S, N A E Y C, and I could go on and on and on almost every page. Now, somewhere, you need to put a definition of these acronyms in your report. Then, start, this report needs to be totally rewritten, starting with Page One, the first paragraph. It's rather elitist, it is, it could be simplified into layman's terms. Assume I'm reading it.
You mean the cover?
I'm talking about.
Page three?
Purpose.
Yes, yes, yes.
The purpose of this project was to develop a community-driven local and state response to identify gaps in early childhood services and supports and et cetera, et cetera. That paragraph could be so easily simplified, okay? You know, you have adjectives you don't need throughout here. You have descriptions that don't add any value to sentences. It's written in the least, in an elitist instead of a scientific writing manner, okay? The purpose of this project was to develop a response to identify gaps in early childhood services and supports for social, emotional development, and early childhood mental health. Doesn't that read better?
This is a specific directive we were given by the Department of Health and Children Services.
Well, you put that as a footnote, okay?
I will thank you for your feedback.
Because, believe me, I read a lot of stuff, and there's, I want to be able to read it fast and efficiently, okay?
Thank you.
When you add all this stuff, it's not fast, it's not efficient, and you lose your audience.
Thank you.
And you don't want to lose me. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback.
Go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
Let me defend this.
Well, I like it.
No.
Just that the average person wouldn't understand.
No, I agree, but like she was saying, and I thought I tried to point out at the beginning, they did this for HHS. HHS commissioned it, and it hadn't been tailored toward that. I just wanted us to get the essence of it, and if the board wants to dig into it more, I'm sure they can compare it more in layman's terms, but this is, like I said, to add to the body of knowledge of the conversation we've had about mental health, so, thank you.
And if I may respond, I know what some of these acronyms mean because I do a lot of reading, and I support everything we can for mental health, and I understand this is in response to mental health issues we have. So, you know, I'm not trying to be overly critical, I just want to make it so it's more successful.
Right, and part of it, this is the research study, we presented to you, we would never take this to a family, obviously, and part of our job then is educators on the local level is to make it experiential and make it audience-friendly to who we're reaching, so.
Well, even those who you're trying to reach, clear, short, concise, footnotes for those who want to delve deeper into it. I mean, my writing, I would get criticized in high school because it was too short. It was too concise, I didn't use adjectives. The bride walked down the aisle. It's supposed to be the bride with the long flowing hair in the white dress with two people holding the tail of it, you know, walked down the aisle. Well, wait a second, that just is the bride walked down the aisle. That's the only real important thing in there. And I actually got failed for my writing because it was too short, too concise, not flowery enough, and I still write that way. So, you know, tell me what I need to know and keep it short and simple. Thank you.
Commissioner Duda?
I want to thank everybody involved with this for bringing this to our attention. Two such eloquent doctors working on this. I think it is important for this board to be reminded periodically of some of the research and activities that extension has going on in Douglas County. Some of us are still hung up on the idea that extension is only for farmers, and you are obviously keeping your work, I think, very relevant to the needs of our community today, and I appreciate the update. But I also want to thank Commissioner Rogers for not only bringing this to our attention but for getting involved with extension. I think that is important, that this board be represented there, and I appreciate your involvement and the activity that brought us to this point. I think this is a great work, maybe some of the words are a little bit for a farmer, but you wrote it for HHS, you didn't write it for me. So, thank you for the good work that you are doing.
I also want to piggyback on what Commissioner Duda said. I had no idea that extension was involved in something like this, and I think it's great that you are, and also, thank you to Commissioner Rogers for having you ladies come to the board and present this, because it lets us know, like you said, that there's more than just farmland with extension, there's projects such as this, and I want to just say thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
And I want to echo that. Plus, not only does it let us know, it lets the public who may be watching and the press, no, yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, Commissioner Rogers, for bringing that to our attention. Next, we have committees. First is the Finance Committee with Commissioner Clara Duda and PJ Morgan.
May I just present? Hello?
Excuse me, I have one, PJ, I just want to mention one thing on finance. The final valuations came out this week, and when we had put our budget together, we assumed a 1% increase in valuations, and they came in at 1.85%. So, that means that the valuation in a full year would essentially create another $850,000 of property tax revenue, you know. We'll only get half of that, a little more than half of that next year, $450,000, but, and our budget is set, so that money will go into our reserve, but I think it's a positive that we're going to get that additional revenue for any unexpected expenses that could come up, and it also will strengthen our story when we go out to the rating agencies with the bond offering that'll hopefully be approved in November, showing again greater financial strength and higher level of reserves. So, I just did want to mention that.
Very good. Thanks.
Commissioner Boyle?
Where is that money placed? Is it in some contingency fund or is it just, where does it sit?
It would, when the tax revenue comes in, it essentially goes into the general fund reserve, and, you know, we have our expenses that go against it, but expenses, if they're as budgeted, the revenues will be $450,000 higher, so the net effect is that our reserve will be $450,000 higher.
Is there anything we should do to avoid this because we, we're getting more money than we thought we were, and so, we're, you know, we build a budget based on what we thought we had. Should we change the timing somewhere so that this valuation comes in before we actually finalize our budget? Is that possible?
Well, the thing is, we were told a few years ago that our reserve was down a little bit, we should try to get an increase, this is going to help us. And Commissioner Duda, you can say something about that. I think that's accurate, that this will help us get that reserve up because we were told about that.
Oh, sure, of course, long-term, this is nothing but good news for the county, not necessarily for the taxpayers, we're paying a little more taxes, but for the county, it is good news. As to the timing, it was a deliberate decision by this board. We don't have to have even passed our budget yet. And we could have waited until we received all of this information and then pass our budget at the last possible minute like we used to do. We're almost two months into our new fiscal year.
Yeah.
I think it is prudent that we made the change, the conscious decision to move up our schedule to pass the budget, hopefully before the fiscal year begins, but at least as close to the beginning of the fiscal year as possible rather than waiting. And there's, you'll see a lot of counties still passing their budgets yet, haven't passed them yet, and so, they'll have the benefit of knowing all the latest valuation information, but that was a conscious decision by this board some years ago to move up our schedule to give the department heads and elected officials as much of the year as possible to know exactly what their budget is going in.
Okay, both of your responses are not responsible to what I said. I agree fully with building up our reserves, absolutely, I never said anything about that. And I'm not criticizing the schedule that we use, I like it, and I like the openness that you two have brought to the discussion, no problems with any of that. I'm just asking a simple question, that we're overtaxing, we are getting more money from the taxpayers, this money doesn't belong in our pockets, it belongs in the pockets of the taxpayers, and that's what I'm interested in. Is there some way for us to either return it? Is there some for us, some way for us to yet reduce our expenditures so that we don't need this money? And I understand you want to build up a surplus, that sort of thing, but I just, you know, we're overtaxing, and of course, the city budget, some of us know, requires that that money be placed into an account, and then at the, when budget time comes around, that money has to be taken out and poured into the budget immediately. Any of that, that kind of extra money that's been overtaxed, the city doesn't get to keep. And so, I'm just curious whether we should at least explore.
Well, like I said, this money, we're only going to get half of it this year and we'll get the rest last year, but, so when we do get next year's, when we're looking in our budgeting process, we will take this incremental revenue into account, and since we have this incremental revenue, that would be that much money to go against any potential future tax requirements. So, we will take it into account, it's just going to be a little bit of a lag.
Okay, well, that's a good answer, I like that. I don't want to overtax people because I think that we just shouldn't do that, so I appreciate everybody's comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Duda?
No, I agree with you.
My brain was overtaxed today.
Okay. That's it for this. Next, human resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. Number two, weekly C A O report on staff assaults, Patrick.
There was an incident at General Assistance, fortunately didn't result in any injuries. I guess you could technically call it a staff assault, but it was handled by an employee very well, and I'm really grateful to the employee for handling the situation as they did.
Thank you. Next is legislative issues as presented. We do have need for executive session. Patrick, I have litigation and personal matters, anything else?
I believe that's it.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle?
Oh, I'd like to ask for a point of personal privilege. A good friend of mine who, actually, I, she worked on my campaign for mayor in 1981, and she's a very qualified person, and I got her a job in City Hall, and she stayed there. And she worked in the Human Relations Department and other places, and she was a very tall, elegant African-American woman, and her name was Debbie Powell, and Debbie was a sweetheart, well, she died. So, I'd like a moment of silence to remember her, because she was really, really the kind of person that should be involved in government, positive, friendly, elevator door would open and she'd be there, and she'd break into a big grin and laugh and all that sort of stuff. She's a terrific person, but she died.
Thank you. Before we go into vote for executive session, I just want to make a couple of notes. At 1:00 in Conference Room 903 today, we will be attending the intensive case management focus group, and this focus group will review how the ICM program has benefited the 18-24 year, 18-24-year-old transitional youth in the local community. 18 to 24-year-old transitional youth in the local community. And that is today in Room 903 at 1:00.
And that is an open meeting that the public is invited to?
Yes, thank you, it is. And then tomorrow, Wednesday, August 27th, at 1:00 in Room 903, we will have a Human Resources Committee meeting with United Healthcare Health Plan Performance Review. And just a final note, that we will not meet on Tuesday, September 2nd. And the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, their next meeting is Tuesday, September 9th. And the Douglas County offices will be closed Monday, September 1st in observance of Labor Day. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? Please vote.
This was for litigation and personnel. Personal, thank you.
Motion passes?
Thank you.
Thank you.